So I'm actually still live on YouTube. Okay. No, well, it goes to South. It just says I do not have permission. Okay. Okay, yeah, it's recording. Alright, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is November 21st, meeting of the planning board. If you're live, also, soon. Comment remotely, you can do so through. Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is a public hearing, 250 Turnpike Road.
Last public hearing for this project was on November 7th, at which time it was an extension request was granted for continuation to this evening, November 21st, with an action deadline set for December 16th. That was filed with the town clerk. On November 8th, we received Fussin' O'Neill review comments of submission number three. On November 14th, we received submission number four, plans dated November 14th, 2022. The stormwater report was same as previous. So the submission from Asmit and the news brings tech help. That was sent to Fussin' O'Neill for review with your cover letter because there were some minor changes that he was still describing in that. So we felt the best if they have a clean finish. Final letter. We have not received that letter to date, but we're waiting for it. In the interim, I had drafted a draft decision for the major site plan approval, and attorney Chavel had provided some review comments. I haven't taken any further action on that at this point. What will happen is I'll culminate your comments and any comments from the board, and then we'll have a final draft review at that point. We're awaiting Fussin' O'Neill's comments, final comments from his last submission. We submitted legal opinion requested town council regarding five questions related to A and R, the parking on lower property that had been made out of the parcel, and other questions regarding the special permit from 1990, the conditions of approval that were in that decision. And we received some feedback today from town council this afternoon. And that brings us to this evening. This will be public hearing number six. And you don't need an extension at this point because you're still going till December. So that's where. I did receive, let me just see here.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. And I'm attorney Brian Travel, representative applicant FD 250 Turnpike Road LLC, the owner of the subject property. I'm joined again by Dave Ferris, our principal, and a couple of our colleagues from the office. Again, Ryan Tool, asset manager. And tonight, for the first time, Rachel Mayer, who's a project manager of ours, and also our outside engineer, James Tatro from Asmit Land Design. So we're happy to resume the discussion. Thank you. As Karina mentioned, we did take into account the board's feedback from meeting on the seventh, and in his submission of last Monday, 14th, I think we addressed the open items, the native plant labeling, the 30-inch oak to remain, other matters of that, and that's reflected in one of these plans. So I think we're ready to talk about the conditions.
So has everyone seen the letter, the feedback from town council?
No, we received town council feedback today. It's been forwarded to the planning board, but I haven't forwarded it to.
Yeah.
And if you want, I can do it.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I'm just generally giving an update. So I just want to point out that in cover letter for submission four, were some changes made. So at the prior meeting, there was some landscaping questions from the planning board. So on the existing condition sheet, you want the existing conditions plan was revised to add three maple trees at the northwest corner of the site, and 30-inch oak on the west side of the lower driveway entrance. It had already been noted on the landscaping plan that they were missing for existing conditions. On sheet S2, it was revised to show proposed restriking of of the 17 spaces west of the existing building and 20 spaces on the west of the edge of the lower parking. So those parking spaces had been identified as smaller dimensions than what town code requires. So the engineer, Mr. Tatchell, had updated plans to reflect proper parking space size. And in essence, all it did was just extend the parking slightly further in one direction in order to compensate for the extra half a foot of space. Probably stealing the funding here. Let's see. The three maple trees and 36, 30-inch oak tree noted were also added to this site layout sheet S2. And the location of the proposed snow storage was made and shown in proper areas, and I believe there was one snow storage area added to the plan. Then on landscaping plan, sheet L3, it was revised to propose only native tree and shrub species. Additional trees were added along the site group nine frontage so that in total, 2016 stands and both proposed, like you said, essentially present. There are additional trees in the wooded area. See here. Sheet L3 was also advised to note the existing 30-inch oak tree on the west of the side of the lower driveway entrance. So that is the reason why we reset this back to Fussin' O'Neill so that they could verify that those changes were properly made and closed that process. So now on to town council. What I'll do is I will identify the question that we asked. And then I will give town council's response, and then I'll can elaborate a little bit on it. So the planning board had five questions from which they wanted a legal comment. The first one was that the proposed self-storage project on the newly created north that we got had a row of parking spaces that is located beyond the southern property. You can see that on the plane here. So this is the zone line, also property line based on the A and R that was endorsed in May. So the proposed source on the newly creating a lot showing parking spaces located beyond the southern property line of the proposed self-storage facility approaching onto the newly created southerly lot, and also within an area extending into the residential A zone, which the plan calls out as a 30-foot use season. Is it allowable for the current site plan to encroach on another parcel? Town council elaborated the creation of a new lot lines raises problems with the orphaned parking on new lot. It does not appear that such parking would be allowed in residential zone as we discussed would, nor as we discussed with the 30-foot rule applied to this lot. So when you had one large parcel here, and in the past, you had that parking that went into the residential A zone, I believe that was allowed, and it was even discussed in some documents, so that's what we did. Because there's a town code section that allows you to go 30 feet into a more restrictive zone or to the property line, whichever is less. When you divided the lot, you created your own hardship in a sense. Because now you have legal use in the residential zone because of parking is storage. Or what it was defined by the commission. Very special comment. So one of the ways, I think the way to mitigate that would be to provide a new A and R.
We're not going to likely do that. If anything, we would just argue residential would have appropriate parking. So I don't think another A and R is going to happen.
Because right now, town council says it's a legal use of residential, right? So I don't know how you remedy it without.
Well, we could, we could talk to the neighbors to get their feedback. We could put something in residential A that will cover a tremendous amount of parking.
But the code understand.
Yeah, I understand.
It's going to come down to town council.
We should probably have town council here at the next meeting. Because that's the last meeting we're going to have on this entire approval, where we've got to go another direction. We've vetted this out pretty exhaustively for an existing use. It's a low burden on the community. It's a benefit to the town. We're talking about putting a fence and a gate up. That's why we've been here multiple hearings and why I have several million dollars escrowed that is not being worked in the building.
So is that parking going to be used for the facility, or are you going to abandon that parking?
I think if we have to put the fence where the line is, we'll put it there in the interim period of time so we get utility from the site near term. If that's this board deems appropriate to get the approval. If later we need those extra spaces due to expansion and growth of the facility, we'll come back to the board, and we'll make that hardship case, and we'll deal with that then. But it's very important to this committee that this thing move forward. And the town.
I'm an attorney, and I'm just.
You're relaying what I understand.
So it's the board's decision, and I just want to weigh out.
I understand.
Because you weren't privy to this email yet.
Right.
So that was the first issue, and that's probably
We have no permit to work in that building as it stands now. And I'm paying a lot of interest per day that is very, very significant amounts of money. And I'm being instructed from doing that over a fence and a gate around this outdoor parking use that has not changed one bit. No stormwater changes have occurred. No new pavement is occurring. And by right, we should just be able to at least put a fence and a gate in and use the property so that we can get a permit issued upon the main building.
So you don't have a building permit?
No.
Because it seems to have come through my online the online program came to me, and I thought there was a building permit that you just don't get a certificate of occupancy.
We haven't gotten a building permit.
Have you applied?
We've asked repeatedly for it. Yes.
Because I did convey the information.
I know you did. Your part. I'm very appreciative of the liaison work you've done. And I don't want to speak out of school about our building inspector. She's been great and responsive. But I think this is out of ordinary, normal business procedure for the bylaw and the way your town, our town, is written. And this is very abnormal not to be able to get work done, and we talked about that several weeks ago. And I paid a couple thousand bucks a day of extra interest. But it's now getting to the point where this is like the minimum use we could use this building for. We have multiple parties approaching us to buy the empty building and use it for other uses that are not beneficial to the community, that would make us a tremendous amount of money, and we could just walk from it. And we have other uses in other buildings. We're one of the largest taxpayers in town, and we have a record in this community for building tax valuation. And this is such a light lift, and I've never been before of word where I feel like to get a gate and a fence on an existing stormwater that are not changing, where we're continuing to have meeting after meeting.
Well, understand that for town code, it's a change of use, and that requires cycling improvement.
I understand that the use has already been changed for probably two months.
In a contractor's yard, lumber storage, fuel storage are allowed by right.
You still need site plan for change of use regardless if it's allowed by special permit or by right. Site plan is.
It's important context, though, for to keep in mind when it comes to your review of the site. That town meeting has decided that under the zoning by law, that use up to 50,000 square feet is by right. Those uses.
It still requires.
Right.
And that's why.
I'm just saying that those, as I said, are an important thing to keep in mind when, when it comes to the conditions you're opposing.
So I think the goal would be higher than maybe. Anybody still has to speak to it, but maybe get some ideas to.
Well, Dave mentioned one idea, which is the fence could go at the end of the space, so the spaces are not utilized as part of the site. It's like the fence could be installed on the lot.
Question. So we get. Please, 23. I know you have two, so.
For sure.
Maybe, maybe it's something that you've all raised on. So, so that's that. The second question was about, does a special permit run with the use of the property and a variance run with the land so that if the use changes, the special permit with restrictions for the prior use from law applies? So town council respond, the answer is it depends. Five conditions of approval in that special permit or guide, 1990 special permit, and the five conditions of approval appear to remain applicable and can only be altered by a new special permit. So what he explained to me is that the use is one aspect of it, but then you also have the site ask. So conversion of the building, changing from office, vacant office to self-storage, that's the use, but there were restrictions based on the site as well. And the conditions were, number one, no building on the residential A lot. Number two, no egress on the Parkerville Road. Number three was maintain a 25-foot buffer. Vegetated, I think it meant the existing wooded vegetation of the residential properties. The last two conditions were very specific to the use that kind, which was by manufacturing and assembly. So those wouldn't be applicable to you because that was specifically written in those conditions for that use. So you have those three conditions, I think, that you'd have to contend. For my personal look at the plans today, based on those conditions, this project that's presented, I don't think I think it would comply with those three.
You agree.
So that's just my opinion as town plan. So then question three was in the 1990 CBA decision, the decision of approval was titled as variance and but the vote was taken on special permits. So we received, we got copies of the application, the actual applications that were submitted to zoning board, and it verified that it was special permanent and that the variance was in error, the term variance. And then the fourth question was kind of a repeat of number two, which said, does the 1990 ZBA special permit with restrictions for the light manufacturing and assembly use granted on the original larger parcel still hold if the use changes, noting that the 1990 ZBA special permit was for the original larger property. And the new 2022 ZBA special permit granted is for conversion of vacant building from office use to self-storage use under town code. Note that there are several restrictions in the 1990 CBA permit, and town council refers to his answer in number two, which was he feels, his opinion. He opined that the five conditions of approval in that 1990 special permit remain applicable to be altered by special permit. In regards to that, I spoke with CBA Chair David Williams this afternoon. And I queried him as to what was the intent during the ZBA public hearing regarding these conditions. And it was his opinion that it wasn't elaborated on, but that they, he agreed that it would be still applicable. The five conditions, basically the three to that that is, that was the intent. Then the last question was endorsing the A and R plan from May. Did the planning board negate any conditions of the 1990 CBA special permit that was in place? And the answer was no. Town council will paint kind of A and R was approved under the subdivision control line, does not alter the zoning. So that's basically the answers to those.
So that was a lot for, I mean, we just got it today, too.
Right.
Thoughts, I guess?
Not really any. I agree with Karina that basically this takeaway is there were five conditions in 1990. Town council thinks all five of them apply. Two, maybe three of them relate to, could relate to what we're trying to propose to do now. But they don't really affect what we're talking about because we're not proposing a building on the residential A lot. We're not proposing egress on the Parkerville Road. And there has to be a 25-foot buffer wooded area maintained where residential properties meet. And we're not proposing to disrupt anything there. My argument on that condition would be that means where the residence A portion of 250 or lot B in this case meets the Kittredge Parcel, the Palmer Parcel, because that's residential meeting residential. And that's where there needs to be a 25-foot water.
Also be it known that.
Yes, by FD 250. I was just referencing it by.
Because the butter, this 20 lot at the certified butter's list at the time was still in effect. Had Kittredge as proper, and butter's list.
So. I'm not kidding or trying to be overzealous when I say, let's talk about the conditions for the use. Because I think we heard from town council, but none of that affects this site plan in doing work in this area. Aside from answer number one, which is let's work out how we're going to not have this cycling property use the spaces of parking. Okay. When, if Mr. Ferris is willing to agree to have the fence be on the lot line and therefore make those parking spaces inaccessible, then they're not serving the site plan properly. It's too bad because they're there.
But I think.
They're in use by right today.
The issue of all the people behind us. I mean, town councils basically put a line in the sand and said, go ahead and like test this corridor, test your use and see how far you can go with it, rather than just saying, you know what, we're working with you. You know, doesn't really make a difference. We're going to add the fence there. You're a common owner. They could have fallen a lot of different ways in this. We'll deal with that offline with town council. We obviously aren't country bunkins. We have a lot skilled outside attorneys as well. We consult them before we come before a board like yours. We know what we're talking about. This isn't the first project we've looked at, the site lines, and we have a pretty good understanding what lot B could be. And to suggest we can't have some parking on there. You know, there's a lot of things we could do tomorrow morning, buy right with that property. We have chosen to be a cooperative citizen of this town because I live here. I feel like this is getting really stretched out to put up a fence and a gate to use the property that we own and what we're paying interest on.
Let me ask, is there because attorney Chavel, as an attorney, might be the answer, is there a way to mitigate that by going back to the zoning board feels it for, would a variance be applicable, or is there no use here? There's no. So is there any other opportunity that you can see by going back to the zoning board to request?
Another A and R plan comes to mind, although I don't think we want to spend the time on that.
Well, that would happen very quickly as far as this, you know, as far as on this side of the fence. So if you got that, is, is there, is it just time that's your issue with submitting an A and R to change a lot line?
And frankly, then that I feel like is going to be used as a cudgel, not by this group, but by others in terms of what that means for the approval of the site. And could be then further waylay the approval issuance of the building permit.
I don't understand.
But let me be totally clear about this. I'm traveling overseas. And here, the group of people that agreed to work with us in this project leave the meeting with years of people that worked for me, calling me and telling me this is how we can sandbag and screw up this guy's project. I have a real big problem with neighbors that we're trying to work with leaving a meeting when I'm overseas burying a loved one that are trying to bury a project after a public meeting. Now, that's third-hand information, but it's from people that I know, trust, and have no axe to grind. So. So what, what I think Brian is saying, and I want to be direct, is we don't feel like there's good faith on both sides any longer about getting a very simple plan put forward that actually benefits very people.
Well, if I may, see how the A and R from May has been used. That was reported, but it's led to unwarranted questions about, was it done? And I said to the board directly, I think in the first meeting in August, the A and R was done to make there be self-storage property and then sort of residual, and to cut it along the zone line, basically, aside from.
You could put it anywhere. We just did it for simplicity for the community.
And yet it's led to town council questions, delay for town council opinion.
Code says you can't do.
And here we are.
It's the use in the, in the wrong zone. And that's the problem. The town code is the town code, so the board has to act in accordance with that. And this was a question, of course, they go into town council that has. So there's not, there's not a reason to try and assign you. It's just.
We, I want to be very clear of distinguishing what we're saying. If you think the town is working very constructively to try and get it done. I think we don't feel that's happening any longer with the neighbors based on community discussion after a very open public forum meeting. I wasn't here, so I'm being very transparent. It's third-party information.
So, so I was not privy to any discussion at your meeting, but I know the question arose from a planning board member because we've never seen a site plan in which the site plan leads into another lot.
Right.
The question was, you have a site plan, you're looking at one site, but this is bleeding into another lot.
So let's just agree the fence line should go. And that's the only use area that we can have at this point. And if we need those spaces at some point for further development, we would obviously come back to this board and seek a change in the sight line or a new A and R plan or some other use, but let's not just endlessly table 30, 40 people like that are professionalized trades welders for doing work over the last six weeks. I mean, that's a real thing, you know?
Yeah, I guess I'm still confused about getting the building permit, because I thought we voted, but we were okay. It was on your, like, so we're, we're on board.
I, I agree. I know you're supportive. I'm just telling you, like, it's sort of like the left hand and the right hand. You guys did, you're like, we're very cooperative, and I appreciate the vote. It just hasn't happened. It just hasn't happened or, and it's, you know, just uh.
Oh, I thought you said you only went as far as you could go right now in the building.
We did, like probably six weeks ago. And so we pulled all of those straits off and you know, uh, there's no work. We, we, we could, we, we had people working in the building. We have all the material there. We, we accelerated delivery of material that's been sitting out back. We actually had to move inside because it began to rust. I mean, rust.
So you applied for building permit?
Well, yeah, that was applied for in early September.
Followed up?
Yes, I've been down there personally multiple times. That's right. Yeah.
I think, um, was there another, it was another department that had a comment related to, um, and I could be mixing this up, but maybe you remember, there was another department who was not able to sign on for someone's name. Was that a? Was there another, there was another party? Yeah, there's a reason why the building permits being.
Okay, but it's not on us.
It's not on you. No, absolutely.
No, but I just recall that maybe that.
What's that?
Cause it's not.
I, I don't know. It's, I think it's under review now and I, you know, one of the project managers is here, like Rachel, who's like, this is her project. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. No, thank you.
So, uh, yeah, I guess if you're willing to put the fence down the parking line, the, the actual line.
Mr. Stein?
Thanks, Mamie. Um, so just want to be clear, we're, I, I want to confirm, we are all in agreement that it is not the planning board that is holding up the building permit or the work. Are we, we clear on that?
We are.
Yeah.
Is the proponent?
He's taken a sad yes.
Yep.
Okay. Cause that kept coming up when we're talking about town council's opinion on the lots. So I was a little confused by that. Um. In regards to town council's recommendation for a new A and R, um, it seems clear the proponent does not want to proceed on that basis. So I would think that we would be needing to see a change on the plan. Am I correct?
Not really. I mean, there's already a line there. It would be the board adopts the plan with the, the fence to run parallel with the property line where it's, but we, 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 we split the lot based on industrial residence line, just for simplicity.
So the line would have, oh, am I, we would be interpreting the line to be a fence? I mean.
Yeah, because it, it, you, I think town council's saying you can't have a quote industrial use in a residential district, even though it's a existing parking spaces.
So.
Even though a residential lot could clearly have parking spaces for a whole bunch of reasons. You could own a residential lot and you could just decide I'm going to put some parking in it and have X amount of ground cover. It wouldn't be like, I guarantee that amount of space. If we came, if we wanted tomorrow to, you know, put 50 spaces in the middle of that lot, we could, we could probably do that.
Well, okay, now in fairness to, in fairness to Mr. Ferris, they were just appraised of this, you know, of town council's opinion tonight at this meeting. So it would seem that there's going to have to be some, a little bit more dialogue between the proponent and the planning department on how I mean, it's i- i- if it's going to be in the order of conditions, that would have to be, you know, clearly spelled out. Um, I do, there's been a couple of new things about this, um, about this matter that I haven't encountered before, um, such as the lots. So now it would be that, you know, we have a lot line being interpreted as a, as a fence, a constructed fence. So that would definitely, you know, need to be clarified, um, in my opinion. Thank you.
So first, thank you for updating the plans. Um, appreciate that. I think I looked through, I was fine with the modifications. I'm in agreement with Mr. Stein that I do think you would need to illustrate that the, the wall I find with supporting the wall on the property line, but I would need to see that on fence, sorry, not the wall.
Would the board consider taking action, not necessarily tonight, but even on the 12th? Uh, or whenever you all, at your earliest convenience. That is, includes the condition that the signed sheet show the fence in that location.
All right, we state that what is your question?
Well, we're definitely gonna, I guess, we're headed still, I hope, toward the vote, board voting on the 12th. Is that right, Karina?
That's if that's towards. I am happy to finish the draft decision. To where it needs to be.
We can have, I'm sure that night or seven calendar days before that night, a plan sheet that shows the fence on the lot. Uh, I hope that the recent Fussin' O'Neill letters have been what I think the next one's going to say, which is nothing to see here, keep moving on. Or they're really, they say there are five waiver requests we deferred before. So I think this is going to be another non-substantive change. So I hope we don't get, we're late, waiting for Fussin' O'Neill. But we'll have James change that sheet.
I, I just wanted to ask some clarifying questions about, um, noise. Um, I guess my, um, my thinking is from what I've heard of the plan for the outs, outdoor storage, that this is like kind of a long term, maybe boat, RV. Who's going to park it there? Maybe take it out once a month or less. Um, and so I wanted to just ask, um, you know, will you put any kind of restriction on that? Could somebody, for example, park a piece of equipment that they use every day or once a week and come in the middle of the night and take it out? I'm concerned about noise for the neighbors. And so I just wanted to get some more clarification around how the, how the exterior storage would be used. I want to envision that.
Yeah, I feel like we've talked about it every, every instance of the hearing. I know in giving feedback to Karina on the draft decision, I've included a proposed condition that said that the gate access would be closed to all, aside from the first responders between 10 o'clock PM and 6 o'clock AM is what we put out there. Um, but we think that during other, uh, hours that there could be coming and going. And I know you had asked a couple of weeks ago for us to look at how outdoor storage occurs or doesn't occur at other self-storage buildings.
Yeah.
And it seems very, very common. Uh, our office has done a survey of it. And, and I reviewed that and especially boat, RV, um, car uncovered, a food truck, um, airstream trailer seems to overlap really with every self-storage building.
Yeah.
So I think it's perfect.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. Thank you. And thanks for looking. Cause I've been looking for examples too. I wanted to just let you know that um, I was just made aware today, um, from the board of health that we have a industrial noise policy. So the town adopted a, um, a noise bylaw, uh, I guess at town meeting last year, right? April of 2022, this year? Wow. It seems like a long time ago. Um, and but there was a proposal for some language, um, in that bylaw that was um, suggested to be taken out to make it more simple to get through town meeting. So it did not include industrial or standing noise. So the board, just a little history that the board of health intended to take this up. Um, and I have actually been speaking to them about potential, uh, industrial noise bylaw. So, um, in speaking with, um, uh, the public health director, Heather Alker today, she sent me a couple of documents and the board of health did, um, adopt a, um, a policy, uh, industrial noise, uh, which I think would apply. So, uh, um, it's simply as far as my quick reading and checking with, um, Dr. Alker, it appears to follow the MASTEP air quality standards. I believe it doesn't go outside of that. And I think that was just intentional to capture that Southborough mask, um, you know, as, as, as a board of health, um, follows MASTEP standards. And so, um, so the question I had, because she me, she mentioned to me that she believes that, you know, could apply and could be a, um, a condition that so the proponent, they would need to follow the policy. That seems easy enough. The question comes up is what happens if there is noise? What, what happens if, um, you know, there's just, um, some one of, one of, you know, not in the inside storage facility, because I think that's kind of unlikely. But in the, in the exterior, what happens if there is sort of a noise problem of some, some, some sort? How, how do you think that would go or what would happen?
I, i- i- if I may, I think, you know, this concept that we're proposing before the board is pretty analogous to the neighbor next door, David Eagle, who's a long time or was a long time resident in Southborough, has been very successfully operating almost an identical type of model next door with much heavier equipment, like 18-wheelers pulling in large, you know, temporary permanent storage facilities that is delivered to our types of place, temporary work sites that require much larger trucking and, um, create much more noise than, uh, you know, F two 50 and a guy pulling in a boat. So, you know, I think if bluntly, this board were dealing with a sensitive church next door or, you know, not a car dealer on the other side. And this project is further from neighbors than David Eagle's project, which is right up a budding Sarsen's Way. You know, it's kind of like, what's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. This is actually less burdensome than the direct neighbor who's using it with larger vehicles, has a full-time mechanic workshop out of that site and is customizing, you know, equipment and boxes there onsite and doing real like almost quasi-industrial work in garage base servicing vehicles. And like, I don't think anybody from Sarsen's Way is coming before and saying, you know, let's check the health, you know, code. I think this is the classic case of it's a change of use. It's in its own that kind of calls for it. It's directly analogous to the neighbor. It's, it's not burdening the other neighbor, the car dealer who I stood next to last night at my kid's hockey game. Not saying he endorsed it. I didn't even bring it up to him, but he said, oh, by the way, I know you're doing that. And it's got a pretty big buffer right now of woods that has got the neighbors on high alert and has probably led to a lot of consternation around probably like the most minimal industrial use they could get. And so it's from my standpoint, like, let's just step back from 50,000 feet and ask, is this like on Route nine? Is there a neighbor using it directly the same? And is this likely to be more burdensome or less burdensome than the direct neighbor? And I think if you think from that context, it kind of meets with the keeping of what it is.
So, um, noise is a funny thing and, you know, and you're in a spot that's very close to residential, uh, neighbors, right? And I, I feel the same way that, you know, we had a light bylaw, for example, that the light cannot spill or trespass onto, into a residential area. Right? And I feel the same about noise, um, that I don't think that the neighbors should have to, you know, hear on anything going on in any industrial area. Um, and we don't, we're not covered by a noise by law. So I'm looking for like the condition that, that would work. Um, I would note that I'm quickly checking evil leasing and I've checked their hours before and their hours are, um, if I'm looking, I mean, I'm kind of on Google because I quickly find it on their site, but they say six to five PM. So, um, I wanted to, um, ask you, um, you know, I'm looking for, for similar examples and the, um, I can't think of a one storage in Kingston and some others. They all have kind of like seven to seven or seven to five or some, some sort of daytime hours and yours goes till 10 PM. So, um, I'm interested to find if there's something more similar. Or do you expect, you know, high traffic between 6:00 PM and.
No, but I think it's a lot like the Cadillac dealer. Like if you had your car serviced, you got out of work and you finished dinner with your family, you might decide to drop your car and your keys off at 9:00 PM at night. Wouldn't be the norm. People aren't going to get their cert oil changed at 9:00 PM at night, but they might need to get in there and do that. And it probably doesn't change any dramatic like noise or whatnot. I think it'd be a lot like the guy who needs to head to, you know, tow his boat down south for the winter and what's going to early start and leaves at six in the morning or, you know, something like that. So I don't think it's the norm, but I think we don't want to be operating from a bunch of rules that make it burdensome for local enforcement issues when it's not really practically going to be a regular occurrence.
Uh, no, no, I understand. But if you're saying it's similar to evil leasing, I think we should look at the hours on evil leasing, if they can make it work and be successful. And how, you know, to work for you also, something like that.
Right.
That's all I have.
Uh, uh, I mean, a recruitment from Rongos. Uh, we discussed before that it's not going to be like, people aren't going to be able to run the business out of.
Right.
So it's, if anything, you know, just kind of go with the noise.
Yeah.
And the car analogy too. Okay. If someone picked up a big container of some of the stuff that was going to be stored there, they might have a truck backing up, drop it spot and leave.
Right.
It's like 10 minutes.
Right.
Get it back here. But there's not going to be. I, I'm trying to think of scenarios where you hear a lot of noise. I can't think of one that not, someone's not allowed to pull work there. Um, maybe some storing heavy equipment, but they might just load it up and take it away because they don't think they're worth it. I think it, me personally, that we're sticking to that it's not going to be a place for someone to actually run their business.
Yeah, I don't think it would be ongoing, but I guess, I mean, you know, I hope it wouldn't be, you know, their, their equipment's down there and every morning they go down and can start their engine at, you know, four 30 in the morning or something like that. So that's also not fair to the neighbors. But that sounds like that's not the intention. So I'll, I'll be happy with the response. Thank you.
Awesome. Yeah. Thank you for all the changes on, on the plan. The, so the trees along Route nine and the trees along the western quarter, are they remaining?
Yes. And we actually wanted to point out, yeah, previous version of the plans intended to count a certain number of trees in the, just off the wetland area between the two driveways. And the other driveway here, road right here, we, we wetland. And it flagged a bunch of them for the surveyor. Okay. And he really wasn't going to be able to do so in a really quick manner. And so we, um, convened the landscape architect and instead added extra trees to get to the, at least the 26 necessary, that's, uh, existing identified and proposed trees along the Route nine. There are in fact several extra addition trees that could be counted in that area just off of wetland here, but those will just impact the extras.
So the trees that are flagged with the pink tape, those are for the surveyor too?
Those were for the spare to locate too, so he could, so we'd be able to ship. So, okay, there's a three inch maple right here. There's a, you know, eight inch oak right here, et cetera. And it just turned out with the schedule, but he wasn't going to be able to do that in a timely manner. So we did submit to be in a week before this meeting. So we convened with landscape architect and just said, we'll just show the, this was to make up, I think, a deficit of seven trees or something. At seven trees, it's not, it's not that. So in the end.
The pink tape made me nervous. That usually means the trees will come in ten. So those trees are not coming there.
No, that was just to, that was just to tell the surveyor, please locate this.
Okay. Will he be able to locate them before the show?
I think so, but I, I don't know for sure. A- after finding out that he couldn't locate it before the other meeting uh, and talking, and then talking to the landscape architect, architect that told him, okay, this is now in the background. Those are just going to be extra. So I would actually have to sort of get him back up to speed about, you know, getting that off the schedule. So I, I, and I would say, I think so, but I can't say.
Sure. Go ahead. So I was just looking at the building permit and I just wanted to, um, and, and I could be misunderstanding this, but it says that on November 14th, I think Rachel Mayer added four plans to the building permit application.
but it says that on November fourteenth, I think Rachel Mayer added four plans to the building permit application, right? Rachel was saying, so, is, that was November fourteen, it says, floor plan to update, like, added. And then it says something to the effect that, um, on November eighth, and that was after the November seventh meeting, at some point, I had notified the building department on November second, after two meetings ago, that the planning board was okay with moving, with moving forward with the interior contingent on that occupancy permit. So, when I look at the activity, the, it looks like your team submitted something on the fourteenth of November.
Rachel, why do you?
And then, i- it's like a floor plan, and then, just, you know, on November eighth, it says, uh, status went from on hold to active. So are you sure you don't have your proofs? That's all, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure. So you submitted something to the building department on November fourteenth?
Yeah, well, we submitted on the fourteenth, those are the questions that they had about the emergency lighting address. So we had our events updated and what we submitted there.
The floor plans, okay, that's what I see.
Yeah, but the plans are submitted some time ago, so I want to be clear with this. Not that you're in any way your responsibility. You did what the takeaway was, and I'm grateful for it, which was.
I just, I just, I just don't know, because it just looks like it was put back to act. So you might want to check again. Last one second. So that, I'm just pointing that out to you.
Yeah.
If you haven't followed up, maybe it was just a communication.
Right.
It could be totally, that stands out to me, that maybe we do have something. Thank you, this one.
Well, just one other question, you have a, a northern bayberry?
Yes, yeah.
As a plant, and then that's listed as the botanical name? I don't think that's.
So, so the, the additional plants to be dropped onto the, uh, plateau above the wall here. In here, the, with ten northern bayberry, or any specific locations with the landscape architect. Oh, you're right, he copied the line over, and he didn't put in the, the Latin name.
Want to talk about conditions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, should we talk about waivers first?
Yeah, waivers first.
We're just going to put the, the draft decision up on the board, so we can see it. And I appreciate your review comments on that, so. So again, these are just materials submitted which I'll update. So we want to move on to the waivers. So I'm going to just read the waivers, so the planning board and the, I need to be here. So the first waiver is from zoning section one seventy-four dash thirteen point five stormwater report. Proponent indicated there is no proposed earth disturbance to the site which would impact existing stormwater management plan, designed and built as part of the original site plan approved in nineteen eighty-six. The existing facility utilizes a series of catch basins to feed to separate detention basins. The system will be maintained as is. These, there are no changes proposed to the existing drainage system except for cleaning the inlet outlets and maintenance of existing basins to ensure capacity and function. That's what you have to vote to grant or not.
And so the, the cleaning of the, um, existing drainage basins, that's, I'm going to.
Yes, I think that, um, you have to go back for notice in ten.
Yes.
Do that one.
We've told Melissa absolutely back to them.
Any discussion on the first waiver, Mr. Stein? Any?
No, I'm fine with that one.
Let's try it, just do more.
Solid ones?
Yeah.
So the second waiver that I have listed is no longer required. It was for landscaping designation, specific plantings, a landscaping plan has been submitted. And this application which identifies existing specific plantings already on site, unless specifically stated in the landscaping plan, these plantings are intended to remain. The landscaping plan does not identify each specific species which currently exists on site. As there are significant areas of natural weapons, in other words, to the extent a waiver is required for not identifying each existing plant in what underwooded area, a waiver is requested. And I think that we had talked about this previously, when that wasn't required, because they were specified on.
Yes, addition, originally you were going to keep the, um, current landscaping, but that was removed and new landscaping was proposed, which we have the specific plan to, of course, so I don't think that.
Third waiver?
So we're going to strike that.
Yes, strike the second one. The third waiver request, and these align with, um, Pusson O'Neill's review comments as well, that were provided. Third waiver, it is a waiver from zoning one seventy-four ten B to B thirteen, show existing trees on the site which are a caliber of six inches or larger. As this is an existing site containing a significant amount of mature vegetation, it would be unduly burdensome to locate and identify each tree which are a caliber of six inches or larger. The site contains a significant amount of wetlands which will not be disturbed and likely contains hundreds of such trees. The landscaping plan provided has identified prior specific plantings and on, onsite and falls out. Those were the caliber of six inches or larger. So the planning board will have to decide if they want to grant that waiver. Fourth waiver is from zoning section one seventy-four dash ten B to B fifteen drainage, including detailed design data, pipe sizing, et cetera. The proponent indicated that no earth disturbance or modifications proposed which would impact existing drainage plan, there are a series of catch basins which feed to detention basins, and still adequately serve the site. As these conditions are pre-existing and pre-date the applicant's ownership of the property, detailed design data is not available. There are no changes proposed to the existing drainage system except for cleaning the inlets and outlets and maintenance of the existing basins to ensure capacity and function. The next waiver is waiver from zoning one seventy-four ten B to B eighteen sewage disposal, including detailed design information. Proponent indicated the existing site has a fully functional and pre-existing septic system which will remain unchanged. The proposed use is a considerable reduction in the burden placed on the system. The existing system was designed in conjunction with fifty-three thousand square foot building, containing approximately a dozen restroom facilities. As the proposed use will have nearly no occupancy and will only require one restroom facility, the existing septic system is exceptionally overbuilt. Border Health agreed that the existing septic system is larger adequate than needed for the self-storage business.
And, and, yeah, we also note that, uh, this site had a title five inspection done of that septic system which passed. Sorry.
Waiver from zoning section one seventy-two, one seventy-four dash ten B to B twenty curving. The applicant is not proposing to install any curving and requests a waiver, we got it the same. Then I had two holy placeholders for a waiver from landscape up on the west side, which you have since added, and waiver of parking space dimension, which you have since fixed. We don't need those. So those are the one, two, three, four, five waivers.
Do you anticipate what, um, Pusson O'Neill still has to review in the final? And I know, um, the opponents' council said that, might be some other thing. But do we, do you think we have captured all the waivers possibly? Pusson O'Neill is going to come back with it.
I believe so.
Okay.
I'll say ninety-five percent, yes.
Perfect. I make a motion, we, uh, grant the waivers listed in the draft decision of the major site plan, uh, approval for two fifty term fight road self-storage facility. It is eleven to twenty-two. All right?
Yes.
As discussed and amended this evening.
And you didn't have any changes to the waivers in your permission?
Correct.
I had a quick question.
Mr. Stein?
So, the, uh, the third waiver regarding reflecting existing trees on the site which are a caliber of six inches or larger, if the second waiver is being struck, and we do have a landscaping plan, why do we need a waiver for that?
It's a requirement in the bylaw that truly six inches caliber and more are identified on the plan. That's our section.
Right. So I guess I'm wondering, what, if, would, would the landscaping plan reflect that, then?
Um, it does not.
Right, it's, it's a little different requirement than the one which is struck. One which is struck, again, focused more on landscaping, existing, uh, such, such plants of shrubbery, whereas this, uh, particular condition is directed more at trees elsewhere on the site. It was obviously overlapped, but it's not quite the same.
So typically, when you have a wooded area, it's relatively dense, applicants request a waiver from this section, um, with the six-inch calibers or larger, because there are so many of them to identify. Whereas the second, the other waiver that we're getting rid of, um, the applicant provided a landscape plan.
Okay, so, am I to take it, then, that no trees are going to be removed as part of the work?
In the wooded area? Right?
That is correct. The, there have been some, uh, trees that were in the land, the existing landscaping that were caught and that are to be replaced per the landscaping plan sheet L three of the site plans. But, uh, wooded areas as described in that particular requirement, no, there are not to be any trees, uh, in those areas on site to be caught.
Okay, thanks for explaining.
And I would just add that, you know, one of the impetus is for that, is that if you're revising, you know, you're changing the grain on your site, you're clearing a portion of your site, the board wants to know where are there significant trees that we might want you to try and stay away from? Is there a thirty-inch oak over here that if you, you know, just move the road five feet, you can avoid that, that significant oak? Well, there, that's not really an issue here with this proposal.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second, more discussion. All in favor, true, yes?
Bill, just.
Stein, yes?
The hand, yes, give me your idea.
So, for conditions, next we're going to talk about the conditions, if you want to add any, and then you're going to leave them out there until our next meeting for people to be able to review them and vote on that. Assuming everything goes smoothly, and then you will be. I like to say that, just so everyone knows what to.
Yes, thank you.
So, you want me to move on to the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll go through the conditions, and I'll refer to, um, Ryan's draft. And if you have any comments related to that, I'll pass you down right here.
Great, just quickly, is, are there responses in the Dropbox too?
Yes.
This current back?
Yes. You'll find it right next to. We'll see the decision, M.S.P.A. two fifty, turn back, we'll draft eleven to twenty-two, right below it is. Three to the same, it says, each shall know that. Eleven to seven twenty-two.
Thank you.
So, uh, first condition, all restrictions and conditions from other boards and commissions required pursuant to other permits commenced and ongoing related to the site, and the project shall be complied with. That's a standard condition. Attorney Chabello did not have any comments on that. Just keep going, unless somebody stops me. Okay. Number two, the project shall be constructed in accordance with the approved plans and submittals. That's, uh, just reinforcement, no comment on, on attorney child on that. Number three, except for waivers granted, the applicant shall comply with all provisions of the general bylaws, zoning bylaws and all the rules and regulations applicable there. Two, the applicant shall pay all fees at the town of South Pro imposed generally for construction projects and for the purposes of monitoring compliance of the construction and occupancy of the project in accordance with the site plan approval as applicable unless expressly waived in this decision. So that condition has a couple of reasons. Often during site plan, uh, the planning board will ask Pusson O'Neill to do interim inspections during construction. In certain projects, it's not required, and, uh, ASBOL will require it, which you'll have to pay the consultant fee to review that ASBOL. I want to draw your attention now to section one seventy-four dash ten J, site plan approval, which says compliance, and it indicates that, um, certificate of occupancy will not be issued unless the conditions and elements, all the elements and conditions of the approval are met, and a temporary certificate of occupancy would only be, I will be allowed to sign off at the planning board if there is no public health element or safety element that, and then any drainage work will be bonded, if it's just mining work. Okay, so I just want to point that out, because time and time again, we're running into this where people don't realize that's part of that, and that's why that clause is in there. Okay, and you don't have a comment on that. Number four, um, was town engineering consultancy by construction-based services during construction to ensure compliance and approved plans, and for the review of ASBOL plans for acceptance by the planning board. So I only struck that, um, because the planning board has decided to not inspections during construction, or we just go to the ASBOL requirements. It's a condition that we had that say that ASBOLs are required and anything renewed by county consultant. So I struck that because if you don't want interim inspection, because most of the work is interated. Any concerns with that? Number five, the existing drainage and stormwater management system shall be cleaned and maintained, including, but not limited to cleaning the inlets, outlets, and maintenance of the existing basins to ensure capacity and function, and that aligns itself with conservation requirements. I have no comment on that, because you struck them. Comment on that because you struck them. Number six, allowed lighting for the project will be shown on the approved plans lighting specification for the metric plan and in accordance with the zoning code 174 dash 12. One outdoor illumination, the planning board shall be notified upon completion of the site lighting installation. After said notification, the planning board shall have one year to review the illumination during this review period, the planning board reserve the right to require adjustment of the number in our adjacent property, adjacent property is excessive. No, and or intensity of exterior fixtures, if it determines illumination is insufficient or spill over onto adjacent property excessive. This is subject to the understanding that lighting levels will not go below standard safety requirement, standard condition. Number seven, exterior building mounted light fixtures installed as part of this project will be controlled by an internal time clock, which can be programmed by the owner, light sensors shall be provided for the lighting proposed in the outdoor parking stored area.
We know the times that that's going to be like going on for sensors like is it? Like after eight o'clock, after six o'clock, I mean, I'm not trying to.
No, no.
I mean, I think, a- and I say this because there's some buildings already have retired.
Stay on my, my neighbor.
Yes.
I know all about them. I, I know that it's got to be surface and later because they'll even never pay for that, but.
So anyway, so just sensitive.
Yeah, I get it.
And the same ta- same time sensitivity security too.
Yeah, no, for sure.
That's is going to be, but if you have motion detectors and everything.
That's what we're thinking. So, yeah, I mean, if you look at 352, like we're shutting the lights off on weekends almost all the time. But this, this site, we have multiple lights on all night. We have sensors as we discussed the meeting that I was here at.
So like the motion sensor?
Yeah, motion sensors, yeah. Yeah.
So the motion sensor kick on as soon as it gets dark or would the lights stay on to?
No, the lights wouldn't stay on all night. We'd have probably a very minimal amount of lighting on like near the entrance, for example. Towards the route nine side, but towards the backside, we probably have infrared cameras that could pick up night, you know, recording. And then if somebody stepped into a zone, it would turn on.
So, and again, it's just for.
Yeah.
Simple.
Yep. So, so it's not like that's going to get dark at 4:30 and then you're going to have a bunch of parking lights on till, you know, 6:00 AM in the morning. The answer is no.
Okay. So you're going to have all the sensors all the time.
Correct. Yeah.
Put that in there.
Tell me one more time.
So that. The, I don't want to put words.
But I think that's a fair, fair restatement of it.
The parking or the outdoor storage facility will be put by motion sensors, except for the.
Maybe what you want to say is after business hours, that's, you know.
So your business hours, you said, we were saying don't tap.
Right.
So that's where I'm trying to.
Thread a needle of like what time at night?
Yeah. Was it after six o'clock?
I, I would say let's just split the difference, say eight o'clock. That's reasonable.
So it'll be on till eight and then.
Not necessarily say we're going to leave them on, they might go off earlier, but let's leave it at eight. So we have some barrier. Believe it or not, I'm very frugal with like electricity bills. You're talking to a guy who hedged all this electricity for five years, two years ago. It's the second biggest operating cost on a building behind taxes.
Okay. On to number eight. Landscaping shall be in accordance with landscaping plans submitted by the applicant approved by the planning board, except as otherwise provided in these conditions. Such landscaping shall be maintained, repaired or replaced by the owner as needed to maintain compliance with such plans that standard. Number nine, whenever, wherever new plantings are planned on the site, native plants shall be required. Planting materials will be 100% straight species native to New England, cultivated will not be used. Planting materials and substitutions, including substitutions for plants that die, shall be approved by the town planner, conservation agent and with consultation with open space preservation commission prior to installation. So I highly recommend that after approval, we do make changes. If you are substituting, you need to go through us to make sure you're. Selecting the right plants. It's kind of, it's a helpful tool for you. Number 10 is hours of operation for the building. So. Attorney Chavelle provided a comment to this hours of operation for the building and exterior lot will be for the building 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, subject to card access only by current customers of the self-storage use and continuous video monitoring by the property owner or its present or its agent slash property manager. And then part B was for the exterior lot, 6:00 AM Eastern Time to 10:00 PM Eastern Time only via card access at the gate to the lot.
So I'd like to comment that that's one that I'd like to consider and have further discussion on. I, I don't think that's consistent with the other, you know, evil leasing right next door. My concern is, you know, what if a pod is coming down the road or something and it's, you know, just 10 o'clock at night? I, I don't think that really is. You know, complies with even our noise by law. So I'd like to kind of have the board take a look at it and see what, what might be reasonable. And I'm happy to hear your thoughts. Awesome.
So on the the building, the exterior.
I'm okay with the, no, no, I mean, interiors is completely fine. It's, it's the exterior lot that, that I'm concerned about. You know, if nobody's there, somebody's making noise in the delivery, the, a truck is running or something like that, or it takes a half hour. I think 10 o'clock at night is too late and it's outside of our noise by law. There, there's set hours in the noise by law and you know, so I, I think that we can look at the other businesses in town. If you want to look at evil leasing. Even, yeah, according to the website, evil goes to five or something like that, six. So I'd like it to be more consistent with the other businesses in town for that kind of operation.
So what I want to see.
Well, before we get to that, can I just, so, so if it's a pot, right, help me understand pot. Is that going to be like you guys lease out the pot space and it's going to be your truck coming back with the pot? Or is it going to be another business that I'm going to store this pot here for?
Right.
Period of time, I've got a ticket and I could have a card, I could come in whenever I want.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, this might help answer the weirdest question.
If it's pods, our intent would be that they're there and remain there and they're not coming and going. We don't intend for this to be a station for pods to come and go or storage lots for pods. It'd be that we place the pods and if they remain there and they were simply rented out, they're not coming and going like.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot different than that.
Yeah, they would, they would sit there.
The pods would just stay there.
Yeah, this isn't like we would even remotely have a truck that's like mobly picking and dropping them up, drop, dropping them off.
Okay.
I mean, that's David's model, like, you know, the, we, we actually lease for, for that purpose. But for like construction trailers and things like that, that's not what this is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, a- and I go and I, I think trying to go, Mr. Mayor would be a lot, or we're going with suit. So then who, who would have a car that could come in late at night? Is it someone who has a boat or?
Yeah, or has something inside there that they need for whatever reason.
Where they parked an RV and they're picking it up to take it out through the weekend to camp.
They get out of work at six and they want to go up north and it's sitting there and they pick it up at 7:30 and head up north or whatever.
So, and, and again, my, my mindset of thinking that you're going to have a set spot anyhow where you're going to be able to park.
Right.
So it's not people who packed up their house because they're moving or anything, dropping it off. Because the pods are already going to be there. It's a boat. Pulling it out probably once.
Yeah, but like you, it might be a fisherman and like heading up north for the weekend.
You know.
Get up, yeah, early, grab it, go.
So, just trying to think from a noise standpoint, it's not a.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the right answer to be honest.
I, I think like, I don't want to speak for.
Sound like industrial.
Yeah, is that, because, you know, I've known at least a personal friend, but I haven't been really over his business that in detail. But, you know, I think what he does is takes, for lack of a better term, raw trailers and cut stores into them and welds in, you know, you know, special like windows and all that kind of stuff. He does that out of like his five base. That's like much more use in terms of noise and machinery and work stuff. And it hasn't been a problem like whenever I've been over there, I've heard it, but you know, it's a, he's got very, very large, you know, commercial doors that would, you know, fit a giant box truck going in, but I presume he's like customizing all that stuff in there to send it out on job sites. So I didn't mean to misrepresent art use versus others, other than just two different storage model businesses in the same area.
Yeah, I think I'm trying to come up with something reasonable. It, you know, and it's for that off case that annoys the neighbors. And I think that's not exactly the way I should look at it, but I want to make sure that there's some sort of. You know, I'm, I'm finding out that there's a policy now in town for neighbors to call for help for these longstanding noises. I don't think this is going to fit your model. So I think actually that it would fall under our noise by law. I think that we would reference, I think it's seven to seven is the noise by law that so, so you can't have someone coming in and making a lot of noise. Let's say they bring, doing something that creates a lot of noise as they're bringing in their item, their, their equipment or something. So this doesn't, to me, it does not sound like industrial noise, which is sort of standing noise. And, but we do now have a noise by law. So I think I'd like to consult the noise by law and see if it fits. And maybe that's the answer is just to say that it needs to follow our noise by law, which I believe is. You know, wasn't intended for this case, to be honest, but I think it's seven to seven or something like that.
And I, I would say, I hope town council would agree that a restriction like that is covered by condition three. The applicant shall comply with all provisions of the general bylaws, which the noise by law would be.
I do agree, but I have to say I would like to call out, call it out.
Sure. We'd be open to that. Uh, uh, all versions of the general bylaws in preference, including the noise by law.
Yeah, and.
Specifically, you're saying, I think, because it's contracted work and this I don't typically follow the contracted work or homeowner work. It says noise that is audible beyond the property line while loading or unloading trucks between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, almost otherwise permitted. So that's really just an audible noise that is possibly on the property line. That's the restriction.
Yeah, and, and, and there's, there's one, I'll just be really honest, that there's one that I had been speaking to the Board of Health about, which is more not, not only noise, but also vibration, odor, flashing lights and stuff like that. So it's some environmental controls. And so we're going to put something in, I, I would think that maybe, you know, maybe we need to broaden it or something to do that. So I'm not sure. If it's something that we don't have to decide tonight or do we need to decide that tonight? I, I would want to see, are we following the noise by law that was passed at town meeting? Or, or are we following the noise policy that the Board of Health passed in September? I'm unclear. On that. It's easier to just point to a document, but I'm not sure that either of those cover the situation.
And I'm not sure, not, not to interject, but, you know, we like to think we've been in town for quite a while in different contexts with different tenants, everybody from like drug rehab tenants, you know, that are expanding in the community down a mile down the road. And, you know, that's in Billy's office park that I happen to be a member with a couple of buildings next to him. You know, we listen to the needs and concerns of our neighbors, whether they're a commercial building owner or residential owner. So to the extent the board is willing to maybe be more flexible on that at the beginning with the understanding that there'll be court enforcement, there'll be neighbors that can reach out to us and communicate there's an issue. Then, you know, I'm not sure if you could go back and retroactively change them, but I don't think it's going to be a problem. It's my point. And if it is a problem, then, you know, you know, you can call me to come sit before you and explain it and why we shouldn't get those hours going forward. So I just hate to be like really restrictive at the beginning of a a new initiative with this thing. And this is the first community we're putting this in and we're going to grow it. And so I want it to be successful, but I don't want it to be tied up with a ton of extra rules that, you know, basically are follow the basics, like treat your neighbors, you'd like to be treated and don't wake them up too early in the morning and don't make a lot of noise on weekends at night, like, you know, and if we have those hours, maybe what we should do is try setting them lower at the beginning and see if it's a problem with the tendency, but the key is getting at least up at the beginning. So it's generating the income. I think the big thing I would say with the community is, you know, every building we bought in this community, like if we're given a little flexibility and trust by the boards that we work with, whether it's 352 that we bought, you know, 10, 12 years ago, it's super depressed values, 75% empty. You know, valuation on tax rolls of sub three million bucks and, you know, we double it very quickly. Everybody in the town gets the benefit of that extra tax revenue. The same thing's true with, you know, the asset at 120 we just did in the pandemic. Paul will tell you, Spelly, that, you know, that building sat empty on your tax rolls for, you know, eight to 10 years, you know. 18 months later, we had an 85% lease. We put capex, we work responsibly in the community. And so there's got to be a little bit of give and take in terms of trust that we're going to do the right thing with the site. And I feel like hours of operation are one of these things that we can over manage it at the front end. And it might impede our ability to execute and get at least up just because someone might decide to go to another competing facility that maybe has more flexibility. I don't know that yet. I don't want to misrepresent it and think, but I just think that you know, if neighbors are calling and it's a noise issue, we're going to hear about it, we would adjust anyway without the sports, you know, direction.
So I have to tell you, I feel a little bit differently and I, it's not that you won't be a good neighbor, but we have good neighbors. And once. Once we're in that position, it's out of our hands and according to the policy goes to support health. And it's a huge, long, expensive process and aggravating on all sides. So, you know, I, I think that we do need to put in, you know, reasonable hours of operations for sure. And I'd like to try to align it to something, but I also think that we need to put in, you know, a statement about, you know, no noise at the perimeter, you know, odor, flashing lights, you know, something like that, like, that comes from Westboro's by law. And that was one that I've been looking at for the town to propose to this board. We haven't gotten there. Um, but I'd be interested to see if the board would be interested in putting something like that in there. And in terms of, of hours, I'm happy to use the hours that the news by law have come up with, if it's seven to nine PM. I frankly didn't support that as, you know, a voter, I thought it should be more like 8:00 PM. But that was based on a lot of time and effort, trying to accommodate, you know, neighbors that feel like they have. There's, they work, just like you said, people coming into your facility to get their boat and go away on a nice long weekend. It's understandable. We're not going to get there at, you know, 5:00 PM. So I'm just trying to be reasonable. So I like that seven to nine PM. If that sounds reasonable. I, I don't love it, but that's what it, it's what our by law says. So I'm, I'd like to kind of align with something.
So I, I guess my, my challenge is it's noise that is audible beyond the property line. And I think that the, like, I'm not, I'm not adverse to the proposed hours that the opponent has put on there. I think that if it is a noise that is audible beyond the property line, I would agree that neighbors will complain. I think that one thing that we could add to number three is policies, because the Board of Health has a policy. We don't actually stipulate that. We stipulate the bylaws and zoning and rules and regulations. And I don't, we added the word policies. It would kind of include the inclusive of the Board of Health's policy around EP supporting that. But then it's contained with again, like they're obligated to follow our general by law. So.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can add just policies because there's so many policies. I don't think we can add just policies because there's so many policies. Like, we have policies and other boards have policies, so.
We're subject to, subject to site plan. I think those types of policies that are, we have rules and regulations, but.
So if I could just read, um, I modified, uh, Westboro has very simple by law that annoys that I brought, um, once a while ago to this, um, planning board, um, just to ponder for the future. And I shortened it because it has a bunch of stuff in the middle, but it reads, it would read something like this. No use shall be allowed if it will cause sound, noise, vibration, odor, flashing perceptible without instruments at the, at the boundary of the premises. In fact, Westboro says at two hundred feet from the premises or four hundred feet from the premises. That is a by law that they put in place for, like, some of their, um, fulfillment centers. So without getting off on that, I, I think you're right. I feel the same about noise filling over into presidential. And I'd be happy with some statement that says that, you know, noise, you know, or odor or flashing lights do not fill over into residential. It's, there's this other, um, you know, considerations, um, and then we set some sort of, if you prefer that timeframe, that's okay with me.
Yes, I know with lighting, we have a situation, you can check that in your show. I wonder if we, because I'm fine with those hours, but we've never had an outdoor storage. So I wonder if we could. Check that in the.
I know there is outdoor storage. It's happening. Yeah, I told you. And that's a residential area.
What is your hours of operation? For what, which one are you thinking about? It's not an outdoor use.
Uh, I, you could argue that probably David Eagle was doing outdoor storage with all those trailers.
That's what I'm saying, his hours of operation are like seven to five or something, according to his website.
I think the same thing with the car dealership right next to. But, I mean, I know those cars, they, they come in in all hours of night. And they're not even talking about doing, so, and I, I get if there's industrial noise, I, I think we need to be, be able to parse it off, because if someone's just packing up a boat, they have a regular truck that actually does beat, you know. I think someone should be able to park it right up to the fence, and someone shouldn't be able to come running over like, oh, I heard it on, you know, the residential area because you parked it right next to the fence, you know, or, you know, so. Krena, is there something we can say, like, depending on how many complaints we have in a year, we can reassess it or something like that?
Yeah. Well, and the other thing, too, just to be totally candid with the board is, is if you go stand at where they skate, will they? Just, just go stand there and hear how loud that traffic is down that hill. It's like those trucks are using those air brakes, like, whatever some little homeowner's going to do, like, opening up his little unit and pulling out his old boxes of pictures for, like, a high school reunion. Like, it's not going to compare to those eighteen-wheelers coming over that hill and jacking off the brakes. It's good, but there's a lot, like, I hear, I'm, I'm way, like, wait a minute, motorcycles, all that stuff. So it's sort of like you're on a road that's got sixty thousand cars a day or five, you know.
Me personally, hearing that they're not going to be dropping out, those parts are going to be fixed in the parking lot is huge, because I, I thought they were going to be coming in and out and drop boxes or whatever. That's not the case. A lot better. Now I'm just worried is make sure that it's not bright and, you know, they, they blend in with the environment.
Yeah, no, I mean, to be candid with you, we're trying to get it right in this first build. And we've got to make people feel like their stuff is secure. We put all the team together just to figure out the best infrared cameras that can record at night and how to make that very known to somebody who's keeping their possessions there, so they know it's safe without a bunch of lights running all night. From a, just a business perspective, we'd rather not run the lights all night. We, we do that already at our buildings. If you go by and see, we have a fountain, two fountains behind one twenty and one eighteen. We have montagnas, not because, you know, it's, uh, we don't, it's just, there's nobody at the office buildings in the weekend. So it's sort of silly to run fountains in the back of parking lots all weekend, and we shut them off at, like, six o'clock, because most people left the office by then, you know.
So Krena, is there something we could say will be assessed within a year, depending on lights, noise complaints, or something like that?
It's similar to the lighting, um, where it says that, um, the planning board should be notified upon complete, after said note of planning, which will have one year to review illumination. So it will be one year to review.
Hours of operation pending noise complaints or something like that.
Question, so the exterior lot, um, is available via the card access, six AM to ten PM. You show up with your card at eleven.
They won't be able to get in. It's locked, yeah, yep.
So the card access system that the first responders and property owner, property manager, that was a different one that they can always.
Yeah, those cards will have twenty-four, seven access.
Same system, just different card cards.
Yep.
Because it says, card access, access system usable only by first responders, the property owner, property manager, and customer storing items.
Now, you could add there, subject to the time, the customer time limits stated in subset attempt.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the same thing we do in buildings, like, certain days or times, certain staff can't get in the buildings.
So can I just say, under number three was policies?
Number three, yeah.
And, um, the board would like me to, um, add a condition regarding hours of operation and noise concerns, similar to the lighting condition.
You have one year to review.
Yep.
Can we also reference the, either the noise by law or the Board of Health noise policy, whichever one applies?
The law.
So we reference all general bylaws, which, which, however.
So that maybe the board, I am not sure the Board of Health noise policy applies.
Is it referenced in the by law?
No, so it was a piece that was pulled out of the by law. They didn't want to entertain, um, anything in the industrial area. So it, it is specific to the industrial area, but I don't know whether the Board of Health is thinking that when they created their policy. But it, it, it is, uh, noise coming from an industrial area. So I do think the Board of Health, uh, noise policy, which I only just got today and I sent it to you, Krena, but, yeah, everything else is coming in at four o'clock, too. Um, so I, um, I, I'd be interested to reference specifically that policy. Yes, I don't think that can be decided tonight, um, but yeah, I had just sent it somewhere on it. Can we maybe create a placeholder for it to look at?
Well, the thing.
Look at it, who doesn't?
I had it, let's me.
So Debbie could provide a condition, or you want me to come up with a condition? I, I don't know. I have to, I'm, I'm hearing because we don't know the specifics of the noise by law and the policy. And, um, even though it may be up and coming, like, the, the specific intent for this location in this zone, you said it's not part of that yet.
It, it's intended for industrial or standing noise, which is noise coming from an industrial area.
The upcoming policy?
No, the current Board of Health policy. So I think that at about four o'clock today, it's signed like September nineteenth or something by the Board of Health.
And it specifically says for that zone, for that.
For industrial commercial zone. Yeah, I'd have to go back and take a look at it, too. It's only like a page if we want to look at it very briefly.
It reduces broadband sound level by more than ten decibels. Or produces a pure tone condition when any octave band sender frequency sound pressure level exceeds the two adjacent center frequency sound pressure level, levels of three decibels. It sounds very.
So what I think the problem would be is enforcement. So just from past experience, just a little input here, that if there was a future complaint, then the policy would kick in by the Board of Health being notified that there's a noise complaint. So if you put it in as a condition, then it becomes a building commissioner, coenforcement officers jurisdiction to enforce. And I'm not sure how that works.
Oh, I think it's the Board, Board of Health feels it's their purview. I think that's what it, but just, I see your.
So there is a complaint. Okay, whereas if someone complains, then it would trigger that response, yeah.
And it's, it's Massachusetts regulation.
Yeah, um, I was told that, um, Town Council didn't want to go outside of the NASTEP air quality standards. And so it's, it just follows, it follows it. So I think that it's. Okay, so we think that it does not need to be there because it's enforced anyway.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for helping me understand it.
It's tricky one.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we, we were on, um, number ten was the hours of operations. So at this point, we'll include, um, the comments from Attorney Chauvel regarding the building and exterior lot that I read previously. And, um, previously, Andrew, you had mentioned some, a, a condition about no stacking of pods. And, um, no stacking of pod type storage units, so we're going to throw that in there.
Again, that was before the assumption you're going to be.
Be moving around, yeah, yeah.
I, again, like, my logic on that was not to have.
We're not planning, yeah, that's easy kids, yeah.
Yeah.
Like a shipping.
Container parking lot, yeah, yeah.
So we'll include that. And then also no electricity to be provided for exterior use in that lower lot.
Can I, can I add water, gas, and sanitary to that, too? Electricity. And I think the reason, so I sent along only today, um, you know, some language that I found, um, on that. And I think it just presents a living, like, living in there or, you know, say, I know you're going to monitor it. I know that's not going to happen, but it's, I found some standard language. I haven't given it to you yet, kind of sense of notes. But it sounds like it's on the same lines that there would be no electricity or gas or water.
There is no water line running in the parking lot, the lower parking lot. So there's no water line anyway, okay, so that might help. And then there's no gas line in the existing or proposed in that lower lot.
Is there electricity?
Electricity came because the light falls, and you can add an outlet on the light poles.
Okay.
So that's why that was only on.
I'm laughing because I think, like, my wife, like, vanished from the house. I'd be living in one of these places.
I also.
Don't give anybody any ideas.
We talked a couple instances of this hearing ago about the idea that we may come back with a second modification to show a new building in the lot. So the, uh, storage would be in a building rather than pods, for example. And so I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that if there be a restriction about no utilities in the lower lot, that that wouldn't be a perpetual restriction, because again, we may propose to put a building there that would be served by gas at that time.
And I don't think that here is to make a condition to not allow utilities there. I'm just saying those utilities are not there, you know, this proposal, so no one has anything to tap into, the electricity was there.
So, okay, but it saved, someone put a triple charger on their car, just starting a car there, and they plugged into a main post and then a triple charger.
So there's, I, I, I mentioned previously that some towns have others about, like, no repair or any, anything like that. Like, why would you do that?
If you're storing, like, long-term a car, like, for six months, you put a triple charger, the battery, so it doesn't die. Um, need to plug it in, like, I would view that as something that would be okay. That's me, because I've had to do, I've done it.
Otherwise, you have a dead battery.
Yeah. I don't know if they want to do that or not, but like, that I see as something like, you know.
It starts out that way, you know, and then it creeps.
It goes to me living there.
Yes.
Again, I.
In the man.
With an electric heater.
Well, I think we discussed no electricity in the lower lot, like, some people are, like, working there.
Right.
Or something. Those.
Right.
Okay. Then, uh, we have a placeholder under number eleven, the lower parking area entrance gate shall operate with. And, um, Attorney Chauvel had appended that with a card access system on a usable only by first responders, the property owner, its property manager, and customer storing items at the lower parking area. So the lower parking area entrance gate will operate with the card access system used, usable only by first responders, property owner, its property manager, and customers storing items at the lower parking area. Which. Excess.
And then we were going to add that line around, the, the customers are subject to the hours that it specifies above in an exterior lot. The, but everyone else is.
Customers are.
Customer, the customer storing items are subject to, um, ten B times six to ten C.
Studio one.
Yeah.
Is that same car that gets in the parking lot or the exterior lot, get access to the building if they.
Yeah, it'll be one car, but it'll have restrictions.
If they want to use that one bathroom.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, so they.
Yeah, use facilities.
Yeah, I don't want someone to, like, walk to the back and all of a sudden they're exposing themselves to the neighbors.
Right, yeah, for sure. Yep.
So the remaining, the remaining, can you sort of go with that?
So I have a couple, I have one more.
Okay. To add?
Yeah.
At the end? Or do you want to, want me to just read the standard ones and then you can add some more? So the last few, number twelve, a pre-construction meeting, construction schedule, um, fourteen days prior construction. We need to provide written notice, that's standard. Number thirteen, um, upon site approval prior, and prior to the last permit appeal period, two sets of final proof plans should be submitted for endorsement by the planning board, AutoCAD files, plan sheets, followed by a electronic file of the scanned version of endorsement administered. Number fourteen, major site plan decision approval decision should be reported to registry deeds. The planning board endorsed plans can be added as an exhibit in letter-sized sheets, so you don't have to record, um, both sides. As long as there's a incentive of it at the end of the decision. And you need to provide written proof that it's reported to the planning board ten days after the. And then after construction's completed, two copies, um, and PDFs of complete as-built plans. That's the complete site, reflecting all the project site plan features, including lighting, landscaping, all structural stormwater controls and treatment VMPs required, as well as any deviations from the approved plans, if any. And she'll be accompanied by a letter from a professional engineer certifying that construction was completed substantially in accordance with the plans. That's very important, that, that language is exact, like, that one, the certified engineer submits that. As the plans are going to be reviewed by the town's consultant and acceptance by the planning board, fire the planning board sign up on. As the plans are going to be reviewed by the town's consultant and acceptance by the planning board, fire the planning board sign up on strategic development. That's in the code. And once as-bits are accepted by the planning board, it shall be provided to the planning, the planning board, public works, building department. And attorney Chauvel, do you have any comments on that?
Thank you.
I have. Existing trees on west. The western portion, yes, and along, no, I'm Sheldon Bay. And.
Is western the section between Eagle and I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And no access to.
No access. Access, no particular access. Because access is also walking inside.
I had the same one. That was my.
You know what I'm saying? Because access can be pedestrian access. Bicycle access.
Well, it's going to be fenced anyway, so.
So no access to.
From to or from lot A, which is the second.
So I'm sorry, the fence. Does that have to be a conditioner? We just know that it's coming in the new.
So there will, at this meeting, the fence will be moved. So it's
It'll be moved from here to here, just inside of the zone line and property line.
Might want to check with the building department on stuff that. From the property line, based on the height. Just check the definition of the code. I just don't know enough to check my head now. There may be a slight. It's a certain height, there's a setback requirement. Keep that up later. It's in the wrong place. So I will, just before we go to the public, I will revise the conditions and draft decision to reflect the. Anything?
I have nothing to add to that discussion. Thank you.
Anyone in the public? Yes, sir.
John Palmer, 131 Marchville. So appreciate all the diligence on those conditions. That's great. What about any conditions relative to what would be stored? The outside self-storage or the inside self-storage for that matter. So explosives or toxic materials or anything like that? That we should be considering. When we went through that with. No, 154, 156. Contractor base and everything. There was a whole.
What could be stored outside and inside? Right, so the buildings, right, there was a protocol for tenants that outline what they would be allowed. Not very specifically, but based on the rules. Like if you, and each unit could be very different.
We could just say restricted dynamite. I think we're comfortable.
Your rental, your rental agreements, right, that they sign have to include things like that.
Right, for sure.
No people that can sleep there. There's no animals that can be kept there. And I think you are, those types of agreements. Probably state laws. You know, what can you can occupy building that contains storage facility under building code and on the public count.
That's why I was trying to go through that. I know that we had to go through that.
They want to apply any of the NASTI law that defines restrictions as different facilities of storage units.
There are state laws that we.
Chapter 105A, self self-service storage facilities.
I mean, I'm just going off of the, you know, simple Google search explosives and self-storage. And there's countless, you know, stories of explosive, explosives being found in self-storage by EA and everyone else. So it's it's something I would think that we'd want to address as as a town to make sure that we're not seeing that in these self-storage facilities.
Those things aren't legal to store, I would imagine, based on state fire code. Permit you to read for that. So if someone's doing something that legally, that has to be enforcement, law enforcement.
And and I'm just asking a question. I don't, I don't know. This is just, you know, a concern that I would have.
So an example was a protocol for new tenants on a prior project. It was a protocol for new tenants entering to lease a unit in the facility. It would be acceptable as a condition of the grant of the request for light manufacturing private garage of storage does not require special permit metal space. This use would also be subject to protocol. Said, gave the definition of the uses. And then it said that prior to the that the building inspector first responder required information regarding the use and occupancy of units on the premises. But those were for humans. Like, it was, those were contractor days where people would rent the space to either, you know, do carpentry work or painting or clay molding or welding. It was built out for that for building code. That was more for human occupancy as opposed to stuff.
Like Marty found, chapter 105A covers self-storage units.
Oh, I was going to say that I think the state fire code exactly what you said, there are provisions that prevent that. So I, I think everything that we do is within the compliance.
Yeah, you have to follow the law. Okay, so I'll draft these decisions further, take these further to what discussion was tonight and provide a new draft. Send it to the applicant team and post it in a packet to anyone who wants me to, so that the public can see. We always have them at the office too, if you wish to see them.
Just on expectations, one more question. It's, I know they're updating the plans, but attorney Chauvel had a good question around the question O'Neill comments. Right, we're Thanksgiving holiday. It's going to be a little bit delayed. So we're giving them leniency to get back the comments from at question O'Neill before they update the plans with the gate. The fence.
We did ask question O'Neill to provide a final, a final letter. So I'm not the rest of this week, but on Monday, when I return, I'll follow up with, maybe a colleague can hear in the week. Ideally, I don't anticipate a lot other than those comments. Those changes are pretty unacceptable. I did speak to Ron.
I think there are three changes need to be made. One is move the fence, which James can do in a minute. The landscape architect will give the botanical name for Northern Bayberry, which I think he can do in one minute. And so the only limiting factor will be locating the trees to then submit updated plan. If we're going to have a surveyor complete that. So we got to push the surveyor, I think. So aside from that, I think we should be able to send back during the course of next week, pretty soon. Which would be well over seven calendar days in advance of the year.
We tell you specifically, if we know, like, you should probably reach out to question O'Neill right away and say, hey, FYI, they're moving the fence. Any other concerns before you write back? So you get that to the performance ASAP if they think that there's going to be any doubts. No one wants to be surprised.
All right. So there's no guarantee because they might have sent me a letter already or the process is sending it, but I'll follow up with them right away. So just add this to.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
May we extend the public hearing for 250 turnpike road change of use storage facility. Number 12, 2022. 7:05 PM.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor, Latrell? Yes.
Mills, yes. Stein, yes.
Hand, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 200 turnpike road, Mr. Mills.
Oh, so you already talked about.
We didn't talk.
Okay.
You can read the extension. So they're, so they're not here tonight. I requested an extension.
They requested an extension. Also, we're awaiting question O'Neill comments on submission number two.
Make a motion to set for extend the public hearing for the applicant's request for 200 turnpike road major site plan approvals, special permit over impact development. Asked by the applicant to send it to December to send it January 13th, 2023.
Oh, second. I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell? Yes.
Mills, yes. Stein, yes.
Who would hand? Yes. Mary, yes.
Now you have to continue, motion to continue.
We should continue the public hearing for 200 turnpike roads, no removal landscaping contractor facility major site plan approval and 200 turnpike roads, no removal landscaping contractor special permit to December 12th, 2022 at 7:10 PM.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell? Yes.
Mills, yes. Stein, yes.
Who would hand? Yes. Mary, yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion item 96 Mountain Victory Road Ruby Estates subdivision extension requests for low-impact development, special permit.
So if you recall, 96 Mountain Victory subdivision Ruby Estates made a few years ago. Not too long ago, Michael Bartley requested an extension to the covenant for the subdivision to June 11th, 2025. Supply changes, et cetera. In upcoming April of 23, the lid will also expire. So in order to align the two permits, Michael Bartley requested an extension to the special permit development to the same date. So that no action is taken on the project by June 11th, 2025. And might be your site on other subdivision that the public reflects. And there's a notice, draft notice that was created. But Mike is here.
So just to be clear, so this doesn't actually expire until when? June. And Mr. Bartley has been proactive and centered it up to think, hey, I should align these two together. Is that right?
Yeah, we nudged him a little and said, don't forget.
Well, I I say that because it's nice that he's coming this.
It's not the day after.
Or the day before, anything like that. So I appreciate that thoughtfulness. And I remember the supply chain conversation too. So thank you for coming proactively.
Good evening, Mr. Bartley. Would you like to add anything? Or do you need to cover?
She pretty much covered it, but thanks for having me in.
Any questions on the board? Yes. So I have a question. So this is a special permit for the lid. So that's assuming the lid, the lower impact development, like laws don't change. So we preserve whatever has been approved now, but what happens if a law gets changed?
The decision is.
Yeah, those two years, a year or whatever. So that's, puts it in. Right. So I guess my concern by extending it to 2025, if something changes environmentally and that impacts a lid, would he need to come back to the board to get a lid approval? You know, I I understand he's trying to be proactive and not lapse, but if we are trying to be environmentally conscious with appropriate low-impact development permit. Are we going to be doing anything that's in disservice for ourselves as a town in starting this? Are we going to be doing anything that's in disservice for ourselves as a town in starting this precedent for lid?
I don't think it should be a regular type of just hot lunch approval. Um, this is a subdivision though, I believe it's eleven lots. Right, Michael? It's how many lots?
Uh, this is six.
Six lots, I'm sorry, I was thinking of, I don't know. So this is six lots and they have been a definitive approval subdivision approval. And the covenant and that was extended already. The lid is tied to that. Approval, so. Because it, and I'm not an attorney, but I think my impression would be that if they have a decision that's already approved and the planning board decides to waive it, falls under the rules. Decision was approved. You can't like change the rules of engagement after you've already approved something. That's why they expire at certain times. That if you don't act and, you know, they don't want open property, you know, property lingering out there or whatever, if it was proposed to do something on it. And they want these site plans and subdivisions built relatively. At the proper time and hence the covenants. But I do think they're tied together and I think that decisions are, is already proven. And it's your decision tonight if you wish to extend it. The only thing is that it was already, one was already. But you know, in the future, you might. Apply differently. Because they're both now expiring at the same time. So if Michael comes back in the future, planning could potentially have a different opinion doing another extension. When the time comes, you have to request an extension prior to those expiring. So just be aware of that, that it's not a guarantee that you get another extension.
Jesse?
No questions.
I make a motion that we uh. Extend.
The last line, see the very last.
All those together. The, the weeks. By the extension request for the lid special permit uh, for ninety-six month Vickery Road Ruby Estates. Subdivision to June. Eleven, two thousand twenty-five. Requested by the.
I have a motion in the second, any more discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Who in hand, yes? To Mary, yes?
So, Michael, that will be filed with the town clerk. Within a week or so, and then you'll need to record that. So you'll have to pick up an attested copy from the town clerk and then record that notice.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good Thanksgiving.
Next item on the agenda, one fifty-four, one fifty-six North Borough Road, site compliance.
Yes, and we'll, we'll get your signature on this um, extension for Mount Vickery as well. One of us will pop over and sign it, even though we have a majority who are the votes we'd like to get on that.
It would be a great.
Okay.
Thanks, Andrew's gonna bring it to you. Up to speed, sure. So um. What was Christine's name? It's Michael Quinn. He represents property owner Roger Kane with Kane Bill. Several years ago, Roger was. Committed, signed, uh, major site plan and low impact development. And then it was by a different owner. And then Mr. Kane purchased the property and then went into construction phase. On which um, construction was starting to be completed and they're in search, they're, they are looking for their certificate of occupancy. Um, a couple of things happened along the way. We had some issues with lighting, which was remedied. Then um. There's some landscaping things that you're still working on, but we've made some progress. So um. An as-built was submitted for the project and it went to Fussin' O'Neill for review. Because of the difference in timing of when things are going to be done. For the town consultant to review, we can split it into two parts. We have the civil site aspect, the as-built for review. Which has been done and has been submitted and the initial round was reviewed. And then we separated the landscaping review, so landscape architects got the business. Very specific to native species that was approved as part of that covenant. So the status is that as-bills were submitted with civil site aspects. They were provided to Fussin' O'Neill. Fussin' O'Neill provided review comments and they had thirteen or so comments on miscellaneous items related to parking, rain pipe, some materials. Some guard rail and such. In addition, they also found that one of the rain gardens, which acts as detention basin. Like stormwater management was built smaller than approved plans required. So that was picked up in the review, so. If you also recall, the opponent wanted to change the used ownership and then um, that was required in a modification. And it also triggered, you know, all these things to have to be remedied. So they decided to go back to rental approach. So they didn't have to modify the conditions related to that. So there were three things. In the town code, section one seventy-four dash ten J, which says compliance. Requires that prior to certificate of occupancy. All elements and conditions of a site plan must be completed. Temporary certificate of occupancy is allowed, excepted by the planning board. If there are no public health and safety related items. And then a bond is provided for the remaining work. The advanced safety or whatever. There's guard rail, if there's a sign missing, whatever. So. We had three outstanding issues. We needed um. The landscaping to be completed, which um. They've been working on and they recently let the planning board list of plantings for this wall, which were acceptable. We worked it out and. My understanding, we planted those, but there's some remaining landscaping that still has to be put in and you're proposing to do that in twenty twenty-three.
In this process.
Yeah, so one thing that wanted. Assuming we asked for is a bond for that landscaping and in remaining work. The other thing that was a requirement is that we needed supplemental review fee because the as-built had these thirteen issues. And um. Their engineer Peter Beemis provided a response to those. But those responses have to be re-reviewed by Fussin' O'Neill to say, we accept that change and or recommend to the planning board to accept those. Answers or still require mitigation for those features. So we received a check yes, yesterday or last week, this is Monday. And that's been deposited and we're going to send the revised as-built with Peter Beemis's response comments to Fussin' O'Neill to re-review those components. So that's number two. It's a landscape, a bond for the remaining work, a re, a supplemental review of the civil site. And understand that when the landscaping is completed in spring of twenty-three, that Fussin' O'Neill still has to review an as-built of the landscape. The third thing is that. The engineer certifying letter that came with the as-built indicated that the as-built stormwater calculations. That, that the stormwater was built to meet as though, uh, to meet approved conditions for the drainage. So the drainage supposedly was built and functions the way it was supposed to. And Fussin' O'Neill recommended that um, the planning board request. As-built drainage calculations to show, to confirm that what was built does function. So. That was submitted to, that was provided to us and it was reviewed by Fussin' O'Neill and it was found not to be acceptable. There were some deficiencies in the way the calculations were done. There was some huge potential cumulative discrepancies in the calculations, not just one number a little different, but across the board numbers were different, which may cumulatively affect to prove that the system works. And then.
Was that missed when we did the whole, went through this all, or did someone change what actually got built compared to what we filed?
What got built was built small.
Okay, alright.
Right, so and, and it was, it was kind of obvious when you went to the site because you could see the bays. You know, the bays have certain lengths. If you look at the plan, the plan shows the bays and the structure was supposed to be maybe three bays long and it was only one and a half. Like, I can't say, I don't want to say it's that much smaller than, I don't want to imply something that I'm not saying. So. We. Received those calculations today from Peter Beemis, I think he emailed a PDF over sometime after time. Yeah. Yeah, it's addressed to the conservation commission because that task is actually being paid for under a task board of conservation. Because we both require it, you've already supplied the renew fees for that, so. As of this morning, Melissa, I have not, conservation agent had received them. I had even, but this afternoon we did get them. So. We need to send those to Fussin' O'Neill as well. So we have a couple of things going back to Fussin' O'Neill for brief review. And then we have a request for one, um, for the remaining work. So it's up to the planning board. We need to know what the remaining work is and. Fussin' O'Neill will likely not come out and say this landscape was not done because we could probably have a sense of the invoice, that the plantings that you've left, you have an idea of what they would cost.
Yes.
But the other civil site features will depend on Fussin' O'Neill's final review or supplemental review to see what Peter Beemis responded to was acceptable and the drainage counts work. Because if the drainage counts don't work, you might have to extend that basin to make it work. And that's going to be a cost. So we'll see what happens. Still. It really needs to work because that's kind of a public, so you can tell if issue like a sentence is, doesn't worry on you. Costs problems and that's on, close to the road, there's accidents there, it's partially on town property, you know, the license, it's a major bus route. It's a traffic loop from my school. Yeah, so it's important. So we, we've come a long way and I think. Michael Quinn has made a lot of progress in the last couple of weeks of addressing landscaping, providing the supplemental fee, getting Peter Beemis to submit updated drainage counts, but all that has to go back to Fussin' O'Neill. We need feedback on that and then the board has to decide if they want to engage Fussin' O'Neill to, based on that information provided, a bond is. Because if there's more than just landscaping, the bond has to cover the rest of that one too. So that's where we're at.
Is the uh, drainage counts, is it only on one side of the building? Everywhere?
Does it affect the whole system?
Can I, just a?
Yeah.
So the drainage, the rain gardens in the front of the building are only for the front and they only capture half the roof drain, half the roof water, because the other half goes in the back and a little bit from the road. It's not a big. You know, it's not a, a, a big, you know, ocean full of water.
But is it all the, is it all of them in front of the entire building?
Yes, there's five rain gardens in front of the building. There's not a lot of water that goes into those rain gardens because it's, the building's only forty feet wide. And we're only putting in twenty feet of that roof, which is not a lot of water. Really isn't. Um, we've, I've been there many times in the heaviest rains and there hasn't been a quarter of an inch of water in the rain gardens. It's never been any water.
So, Prina, did the rain gardens? If there was a tenant in there now? And is there anything that a tenant would be contributing to the rain gardens? Is it all from the roof?
No, the problem is that it's great, if the drainage doesn't function as designed, and I understand what you see there, but those.
Don't, don't color it in if, then it is. It's twenty feet of roof.
Yes.
It's a little bit of road and that's all the water goes in there. There's no water coming from any other area.
But in engineering design, it's based on the type of storm. So the calculations confirm whether a twenty-five year storm, fifty year storm, or a hundred year storm. That system will function. So if it's undersized. We don't know yet until Fussin' O'Neill says it works for that storm. And right now, there's a few inconsistencies in the calculations. That you're ironing out if you need some.
I understand.
So it may look like it's great, but we don't get a hundred year storm. But that's why it's called a hundred year storm.
Well, my question specifically, those rain gardens have, are only for runoff from the roof. There's no impact from whether or not tenants in the building, right?
That's correct. That's good.
I, I have to look at the plan again because there's stormwater system around the back as well, right? You have catch base.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the rain gardens. It's completely separate.
Regardless, where I'm trying to get my, my head around is regardless of whether or not the tenants in there or not. Is like if we have a hundred year storm and the building's empty, so there are problems.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But if there's tenants in there.
Away from the building, that is a concern too, like Mimi mentioned, if it's a school bus route and icing occurs because the undersized.
Understood, but it doesn't impact if there's a tenant.
No, the tenant only impacts the septic system.
You get about five hundred year storm and those rain gardens won't fill with water.
But what Andrew's asking is inside.
I have, I, I have asked the engineer to calculate that out.
I'm just trying to see if the.
I appreciate.
Inside the building, it doesn't matter if there's fifty people.
The building sits empty.
Yeah, or no people, it doesn't change the drainage.
For the rain gardens, talking about.
Right, because the dirty water inside the building doesn't go into storm.
Okay.
That goes to septic. Wouldn't that affect the drainage?
So, again, for my, he brain. Talking about landscaping, the growing season's over, looking at possibly creating a bond and say, well, do the rest of that come? Got the storm, the storm, uh, rain gardens, the calculations and what's the other thing that Fussin' O'Neill's gonna share?
So there were thirteen, there were thirteen comments and they were related to, um, just give you a brief synopsis, number of parking spaces. The required total parking spaces on a plan is seventy-one, however, the plan shows seventy. Total of parking space provided is sixty-nine as shown on as-built. Inspection, so there was a discrepancy between two spaces, landscape islands, um, the size of them. The site plan, proof site plan showed six landscape islands with approximately same dimensions as the parking spaces, nine and a half by eighteen and landscape island detail, prime and elevation of six inches below, top to asphalt three. Constructive landscape islands and those shown on the asphalt plans are smaller islands, nine by six and a half, at about the same elevation as the asphalt surface. This was parking area at the building connected with concrete sidewalk and asphalt section of the parking area at the building connected with road shorter to the east than shown on the plans. Concrete pad mounted transformers. Will go shorter to the east than shown on the plans. Concrete pad mounted transformers with ballads. Transformers not shown on the plan, one is located in the parking, the second one's. Handicap signs involved, it's no constructed handicap sign involved in detail shown, construction detail. One of the signs in topple, uh, sign locations do not appear to be shown as on the ASB plan. And wall installed signs are loose and not correctly affixed. Traffic signs are installed, however, locations do not appear to be shown on the ASB. So the ASB plan is deficient, showing some things, plus there were some things not filled exactly with that, but they improve the plan. Um, building sign, uh, installed in front of the building appears to be located outside of the property line and within the right of way of Northborough Road. Not shown on the.
What was that one?
The building sign installed in front of the building appears to be located outside of the property line and within the right of way of Northborough Road. Not shown on the approved site plans provided or on the ASB plan. Um, but they felt it could be outside of that, but it should be shown on the ASB. And then we could determine if it's on the property or not, if it's properly shown. Guide rail does not appear to be shown on the ASB plan, does not appear to be completely installed as shown on the approved site plan. So the ASB plan didn't pick up the guide rail and then the guide rail that was there didn't naturally approve. Probably some shorter sections or something like that. At the entrance northwest side, it's a section of approximately thirty-five feet. At the exit on the northeast side, a section of probably hundred sixty feet do not, do not appear to have been installed. Whole mounted lights, the approved site plan provided shows a series of whole mounted lights along the southern edge of the parking area that do not appear to have been installed. Fire hydrants, the approved site plan provided showed a fire hydrant in front of the building by the connection close to the roadway was not installed. As shown as the ASB and confirmed during site inspection, a fire hydrant was installed at the east side of the parking incident. The hydrant does not appear to be shown on the approved site plan. So there might have been a movement of a hydrant based on construction. Issues or whatever differences, and as long as the fire chief signs off on it, the hydrant goes with the fire chief.
Is there more than one fire veteran?
No, I think one, it was one that wasn't in the right, fire hydrant shown on the approved site. To be installed in the parking area by the building connector was installed in a different location, about seventeen feet farther south from where it was originally proposed. So hopefully, fire chief signed off on those changes. Um, absorption area, and this is the septic in the area of the parking and absorption area. Riprap covered area for the protected slope appears to have been stalled in excess of what is shown on the approved site plans between parking and the septic absorption area. At the southeast corner of the, um, leach field, the portion of the protective barrier, polybaries exposed. There are signs of erosion behind the silk fence to the southeast end of the site. Rain gardens, the ASB. Show, plan shows elevation control lines at two foot intervals as opposed to one foot interval shown on the plan. Does it, the ASB does not provide the elevation of emergency overflow spillways. In all rain gardens, the emergency overflow spillway appeared to have been constructed at a higher elevation in the edge of the basins. Pipe and rim elevation of rain garden one is shown on the ASB appears to be higher than proposed from elevation on. Bubble up, stand pipe rim elevation on rain garden number two is not shown on the ASB. Forest pavement subdrains, ASB plan shows two forest pavement subdrain outlets to the south of the property. These subdrains were not shown or mentioned on the approved site plan. So I think, so Peter Venus supplied responses to this, like those subject caps or they're not dumping water. He explains the parking, um, he explains each one of, he addresses these things. So those. The ASB he provided and the response have to go back to Fussin. Say, this is okay, this is okay. And in addition, there was a. Supplemental comment letter regarding the rain gardens. And it said in review of the approved site plans, ASB plans during site observations, it appears rain garden five was not constructed to meet the sizes. To be done on approved site plan, due to concerns regarding the construction depth of the basement and the constructed size of the rain garden. By Fussin O'Neill's concern that the stormwater system was not constructed to meet the intended approved site plan and design. To demonstrate the project has been constructed, to meet approved design, please provide ASB stormwater calculations. Mentioned in the ASB certification letter. So they did that and Fussin O'Neill reviewed and came back and said. These things are not quite right and still need to provide. Address those and. Basically, it's relatively short. Um, it said, for all ponds. When you, when you design a drainage system, you create your ponds, make each new certain section of the drainage system. There appears to be a discrepancy in spillway elevation between ASB and the stormwater accounts, although elevation changes for each rain garden are fairly diner. Fussin O'Neill feels that because all the ponds have discrepancies, it may be significant enough to affect themselves. The elevation used within the count should be revised to match the ASB plan. And then in review of the stormwater accounts of rain garden number three, it's difficult to determine how the surface area of each conduit was determined. Elevations and areas should match with the ASB plan shows. So stuff wasn't matching and then the pond elevation was off from what was shown. Uh, the applicant has not demonstrated the ASB stormwater design meets the full intensity approved design, the applicant should provide counts showing the constructed size of the rain gardens will not affect. We provided water quality, groundwater recharge or seventy-five mile drawdown. Please provide calculations showing each constructed rain garden meets intent, um, groundwater is starting to bubble up. So this afternoon, we received a response to that and hopefully it addresses those concerns. Once we send it back to Fussin. So I'm sorry to like. But it kind of paints a little bit of a picture that, you know, there's a little bit of. Sloppiness in ASB and construction and it just compounded things and created difficulties. Which didn't have to, but we're trying to make it work now, we're trying to get, so we know we want to get.
Well, and there was the, so the. Fussin O'Neill's first letter of the thirteen comments was in March. The response was in September. So, you know, this has been dragged out.
Yeah, it's been, it's been.
And then we got the. Additional funds just submitted to Fussin O'Neill last week.
Right, so it's helpful that we have that now, but it's just gonna take. You know, the reviews to happen and hopefully it addresses, you know, the, the, the engineer address the things that are required to be addressed. But once the reviews come back, then there's a better picture of what's left to be done, plus the planting. And then a bond can be sent. And who does that bond?
I, I know that. I can't remember. When we approved this originally, because it was a very. Specific, cutting-edge. Planting, so I, I mean, I, I'd be in favor of accepting a bond. To at least, you know, get the rest of that done.
So do we have a list of what was planted and what needs replanting and where the bond, how we arrived?
Yes. So we, we had the landscape architects, um, make a list of all the plants that we're gonna do in the spring. And price them out and he did that and we invited that to Karina.
I, I only have the history here, I didn't have this one.
In addition to that, I also gave a quote from the landscape, uh. Install the plants.
Are you talking about this?
No.
That's all, that's the most recent thing I was.
This is what I said about two, a week ago.
No, I don't have that.
I sent it to you.
I don't have it, I, I could definitely. Look at my book.
But I wanna know what. What else? And. Um, what, I mean, I have this figure of what the bond estimate is, but I don't know. How that figure is arriving. When I should mention that I was on site a year ago when. Plantings were supposed to be done and then the rest is. So I'd be comfortable with the boss, but I want to know what.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
And there was other, so I just, I don't know, those will require additional.
So first and foremost, the, the most important thing is that the drainage calculations show that the drainage works. And I'm hopeful that the revised calculations will show them. It sounds like you were close, but there were some things that really had to be clarified. So, you know, we can expect a two-week turnaround and it's holiday season. So that's important. The things that were lingering, you know, parking spaces, the doggo. Some of those, the what? The fire hydrants.
Like, that's a long story, in my opinion, just the fire chief just signed off.
Fire chief did some, and we didn't put it in until he did.
Right.
Now, there was a problem with led through on the property and the construction was done during COVID. So we didn't just willy-nilly move it. We got, no, I'm just telling you that that's what we did. And I think Karina did know that, so.
No, I did not know until after we went out to look at the landscaping plan and it was then that I saw. I'm looking at the tension basin and I pointed out to Mimi and Freddie, because we were there looking at the landscaping. That had already been built, because we didn't require any inspections. We just expected.
Right, but the fire chief signed up on that hydrant before we put it in.
Oh yes, that's why I mentioned to Mike, if you could get the fire chief, ask him, just send a memo on.
That's been in the portal for how long, like?
There's a letter from the fire chief.
There's a letter from, we said a Dino.
Yeah, so maybe you can email that to me. It's hard to look through, I have fifty permits a day on that, so to go through all the attachments.
Yes, so on the, on the previous, on the, uh, original response from Fussin O'Neill. Almost all those things were taken care of relatively soon thereafter, the signs. Um, handicap signs had to be put in a certain spot, those spots, there was a window there. So they moved them over a little bit after consulting with a handicapped architect and Laurie Roboli. We all agreed to put them beside the window. And, uh, there's a bunch of other little issues. Um, the, the parking lot had seventy-one spots, but two of them weren't striped. So all those things were built in accordance, but some of the little details in the end got missed and we went back and straightened them out.
Yeah, for example, Pete Venus's responses to the comments I read to you before.
Excuse me?
I'm saying to the planning board that Venus's responses to the thirteen comments, if you look at those quickly, you see that, um. They acknowledge that the site plan did approve seventy-one spaces and had depicted it parallel, two parallels places located on east. Of the same southeast dumpster pad as this affected six spaces planned along the east work limit as a result of the required. A approved site plan required seventy-one spaces and seventy-one spaces are ASB. So that's easy enough to see. Um, the approved site plan did include six longer islands that would be depressed from the pavement. And respectfully request the field change be allowed to be maintained as these islands, as depressions did present conflicts with few adjacent handicap parking spaces. Noting the architectural, uh, access board requirements are in conflict with having serious instructions, so. Number three, um, approved site plan did provide minimal separation from fire hydrants to science building connection. And the ten foot additional was provided as a prudent measure for improved fire personal accessibility. Which is great that Peter says that, but like I said, if he said, you know. Fire chief has signed off on it and then just sent it, that's it, it would be done. Did not include transformer pads. And they have no adverse effect on the facility, both pads are on it, ASB. Handicap signs were installed after the initial site ASB we now indicated. And are now indicated and are properly posted as both pavement markings and elevated, and this is. Peter Venus saying this, so we have to. So you don't have to check for a lot, right? So it's just, it's good that you've done this, but now we're just confirming it through the supplemental review. So none of these lingering things of, you know, the fire hydrants is important, that those locations were signed off by, and I think I mentioned that, Mike. Months ago, just get me the document if you have it. Free standing. So, you know. Section of sidewalk had to be shortened because of the change in where the hydrant location was or something like that. You know, all very viable responses. You just have to vet them, that's all.
Let's do a dress though, the one rain guard that's a little bit smaller. I'm not sure if you can picture the site, it's on a curve. The cur, this bottom curve closes to the Marlboro Northborough line, the building, that's where the building is closest to the road. Um, along that side of the road is a high-pressure gas line that feeds Ken's Foods in Marlboro. And that's a huge facility. And we were told by the gas company, anytime we're within, I think it's fifty or sixty feet of that gas main. They wanted somebody there on site, no matter what we were doing. And that last rain garden has an outcropping ledge. Now, our contract with our excavation contract included all of that blasting that, you know, whatever had to be done. But that, but the, the, what the, uh, gas company told us, we can't blast, we can't chip it, it's just too close. Too risky for that gas line that feeds Ken's Foods in Marlboro. He says that you just can't do, you know, so it's our fault, we should have come back and told you that. We consulted with Peter, Peter said, if you did the calculations, the rain garden's gonna work. Because the rain gods were oversized to begin with. But, you know, again, it's our responsibility, we should have come back to and, and made you aware that, Peter should have made you aware. Ultimately, it's our responsibility and we take full responsibility for that. But the, we didn't just do it. You know, regardless of what the plan said, there was a reason behind. If you go there today, you can see the outcropping ledge and you can see how close it is to the road and that's where that major high-pressure gas line is. So there was a reason behind it.
I'm very familiar with the site I just started to work at, so I don't need to go down late fifteen years.
Oh, really?
So, so what's the ask tonight?
We'd like a certificate of occupancy. The building is done, loyal of all is finished. Plumbing inspector, building inspector, electrical inspector, fire department, border health, they're all done. Um, and so we would like to occupy the building. We're not going anywhere, we're not, you know, we're gonna be back in the spring. I told, uh, Karina several times, I'm gonna be completely transparent on this landscaping. We'll provide you with every possible list prior to installation of anything, which we did a few weeks ago, you were there. And we'll do the same thing in the spring. We don't think that we'll be able to obtain all these plants, but we'll come to you and we'll have recommendations to switch. And we won't do anything without your approval.
So everything that says completed is already in and you. You were able to get them?
Yes. And Karina has all the lists that, that we've planted.
Well, that's the same as when we met.
Yes, yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What, what would be the harm in just waiting for Fussin O'Neill to complete their review?
For us, it's, it's crushing us financially. We have people that wanna move in, if we don't get them in, we've lost them.
Yeah, but I mean, this is, we're talking about a couple of weeks.
Yeah. When it go in December one, excuse me. And we're not going anywhere. If, if Fussin O'Neill comes back and suggests another handicap sign to be placed someplace, we'll install it. We're not going anywhere.
Well, we've been waiting a long time in order to be able to resubmit to, to Fussin O'Neill. Their original letter was in March.
I understand.
So I, I agree with Mr. Stern. I think we need to hear back from Fussin O'Neill.
The building is a hundred percent done and it's not, we're, we're not, you know, people can drive in. Do their business in the building and drive out, it has no effect on the number of bushes, the size of the bushes, any of that stuff.
That's not really what you're keeping you from the certificate of occupancy. Cause you're gonna bond them. That's not. Because you're gonna bond them, that's not a life health, public safety issue. We all acknowledge that, I think, it's not.
So it's not a life safety issue?
It's not a public health landscaping.
What?
Other than what's in the rain gardens, if it's not carpet in the rain gardens, then it impacts the capacity to rain garden. Impacts the ability to hold water. That's not, the, the bond is not the problem.
So, Karina, can I, so what happens when you get in a situation where you have two engineers disagree, Fussin' O'Neill and our engineer? You know, you're looking for a follow-up report, right? On these rain gardens? The calculations you felt weren't adequate or done improperly or whatever. However, you wanna word it.
They didn't confirm that the system worked.
Your opinion?
No.
Of Fussin' O'Neill's opinion?
Third party engineering consultant.
Yeah. So what happens now, what happens? We're at a gridlock here.
We rely on Fussin' O'Neill.
I understand that.
The, the original stormwater management was approved, it worked. It proved that it would work on paper.
So, I don't wanna start, I don't wanna get in a big too, but the way it was approved, it couldn't be built.
So perhaps if.
And I did the construct. Yeah, I should have come in, I admitted that, it was in the middle of COVID, the whole thing, I mean.
But we're not, we're trying to make, we're trying to help you get what you built work.
I'm looking for some help tonight.
So we're just trying to make sure that it does.
I'm looking for some help tonight.
You understand, so we.
I understand what you're saying, Karina.
Yeah, so if, if we have to.
Just prove that it was built.
And we didn't disappear in March. You know, like, for an example, the native, I, I couldn't, can't get the, the bushes that aren't planted now, we can't get them.
Yeah, so we were in the same situation last year.
A year and a half ago.
With the landscaping.
Right.
It was gonna all be done in the fall, what couldn't be done.
Can't get the native species on the approved plan.
Well.
Can't, I do this every day, I'm not, I would never, that would be nothing that I would like hold up multi-million dollar project boss. I drive to Florida to get them, that wouldn't even be native, I mean, it's not, we tried.
I can tell you that Saint Mark's School dormitory project, as an example, had extensive native species requirements on their project. And it was permitted, I think slightly after year. And they're, they are also looking for this certificate of occupancy. So when they came in, they were required to provide asphalt, and they said, well, we don't, we have X, Y, Z not finished. And their landscaping is not complete. So they had to post a bond as well.
So we're willing to do that.
We're, we're ready.
Saying that they were able to get some of the plants, but because of the timing of the construction, if they're falling into where they want to get people into the dorm over Thanksgiving, but they don't have their landscape, they have some of the landscaping, and they were able to find species, and it may be different from what yours.
I know, Karina, that's correct, but I, I asked you personally in your office about a bond many, many, many months ago, and you said that you do not do bonds.
That's absolutely not true.
Well, you did tell me, I, I don't, I tell the truth, I'm an older guy, I don't make stuff.
Are you implying that I don't?
All right, th- this is.
No, I'm saying that's what you told me, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I.
So, uh, we, we called, I can't tell you how many landscaper supply companies, and we had the list, we sent it out.
But, so I'm looking at this, you can't get red maple or paper birch or, I mean, these summer sweet, winter berry, these are all standard things.
Kavickio had some of those, but not enough to fill what was required, so I said, I wanna, I wanna put them all in at once, I didn't wanna put, if we have to, if we need thirty-five of summer fills, I don't wanna put five now and fifteen later and get them from a different nursery and then the different sizes and.
But I think those things are easy to get, because I know a lot of native gardens.
We, I tried everybody, we tried, I, I, you know, we would have, we would have bought them, we would have installed them. We didn't just pick and choose, oh, they'll buy this one, but not this one, we told the supply company, we'll take them all. And they have a difficulty, very difficult time getting them. No, we got posted on, and we said, we'll put them in the spring, we've already ordered all these, and hopefully they'll, they'll come through. The, the building is, is done, there's no reason why we can't have someone go in there and occupy the belt. It's done. Fire departments inspected, electrical, plumbing, building inspector.
Third party building.
I think that you're so close with your calculations that you submitted this evening, right? So you submitted to address Fussin' O'Neill's lingering concerns with the asphalt drainage. Let them review that, make that a priority. We'll tell them, please expedite it as soon as possible, which we always try to do. We get the feedback that that drainage works as built and as shown as it works.
I.
Are you, are you concerned that it won't?
No, I'm not concerned it won't.
So it, it should be relatively easy.
What I'm concerned is, is, is the building is vague, and you know the times we've had to hire people to go pick up the trash? I, I think I've told you guys a couple of times. Last time we all did, it's, it's like once every two weeks, we did a high, how go hire people to go pick up all the trash, because people dumped it, because it's an abandoned building, that's what it looks like. We don't wanna.
A bond you're proposing would be a cash bond?
Cash bond.
I just have some pleasure, I guess my concern is, if you just paid the funds for Fussin' O'Neill, why does your delay make us have an emergency?
There's been numerous checks to Fussin' Fussin' O'Neill.
So it's not an emergency, we, we just like what we deserve.
What you're asking for is to occupy a building on December first, it is December twenty-first?
November.
November, and it's not gonna happen.
We're, we're asking because we have the plumbing inspector, the electrical inspector, the fire department, the border health, and the building inspector, the building is compliant with the building code. The parking lot is compliant with the approved plan, there's seventy-one parking spots there. There's no life and safety issues, we're asking you.
Except the drainage.
I don't believe it's a life and safety issue, if we had a thousand year storm, there, there's not enough area to fill those rain gardens, it's a, it's a twenty foot, what, twenty feet is? It's from here to that table, that's the amount of roof water that's gonna go into those rain gardens. It's not, it's very insignificant.
So my comment is just this, if you'd let me finish my statement. You're an elected board, our job is to follow the law, your job is to put in a site plan to build what was approved by the planning board, you didn't. There was no, there was.
What do you mean, we didn't?
We did.
The asphalt did not equate to the approved plans based on the thirteen comments that came from Fussin' O'Neill.
Those have been addressed, those have been addressed.
They're current, we don't know that. We have, we have Peter Bemis's comments, we require Fussin' O'Neill to third party. I'm not an engineer, I require that, and so my opinion is, I need Fussin' O'Neill to make a comment. I don't believe that we should.
This is a sad state of affairs. Do you have a major site plan approval with you?
Mr. Warren? No comments. You'd like to see it on the screen?
TPW.
I'd like to see number eighteen.
I think you're on the right track, but you need to allow the board to, at least have Fussin' O'Neill confirm that the drainage paths work. It's this close, and then you're gonna post a bond, and you'll be on your way.
Where can we post it today?
You can, but I haven't heard from Fussin' O'Neill. They can post, but you can post a bond for the landscaping, but there may be additional bonding required for anything that isn't working in those thirteen items, which is probably slim.
Let's monetize them, you know, the signs have been done, because Laurie's been out there and approved them.
The signs?
Yeah, the handicap signs, the, the parking lot was painted, there's two more spots, they didn't put the, the lines down the correct way.
Is the freestanding sign, did you confirm that's on fire?
Excuse me?
The freestanding sign?
Yeah.
Did you confirm that's on fire? I'm just asking if you know, I'm not trying to pinpoint.
I, I believe, I believe it's right on the line, and we're gonna move it, so there's no question, we're gonna move it, so there's no.
Do you understand, when a sign is on public right of way, it becomes, it could be a hassle.
Yeah, I understand.
It doesn't always.
It'll be moved.
Seen that way, but see, you see, these are the things that are gonna be vetted with Fussin' O'Neill looking at it. So it's not to get you, it's to protect both the town and your interests, that things get done properly. Alright, so later on, when someone comes back and says, you didn't put that sign in the right place, you can say, yes, I did, look, it was placed in the right place, and then the planning board says, sorry about it, you don't, you don't.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be placed right exactly where it was approved on the, on the plan.
It's unfortunate it isn't already changed. So let's look at number eighteen, you wanna see? So I think you're very close to getting there, but you, you just have to cross the finish line here in proper process. Number eighteen.
Maybe we don't, maybe we don't belong here.
No, that, that, that's.
What, what is it saying?
That's one condition.
Yeah, so that doesn't mean just the binder code, you get the occupancy.
Maybe we don't belong there.
Mike? Going down the right path, don't deviate, if you look at town code, it says certificate of compliance.
The building is a hundred percent done, it's a, it's a crime not to occupy.
Thank you for your time.
So why?
There's no reason why it shouldn't be occupied.
Do you have a money amount tied to what's left?
If you look at, if you look at what's on there.
So if you monetize the thirteen conditions, or if you monetize a month of lost revenue, are you willing to put a bond for the month loss of, of lost revenue plus the plantings?
Can you say that again, please?
So you're, let's say a month of lost revenue?
Yeah.
And you put a bond up for that as a protection for the.
We're not going anywhere, we're gonna get the bond money back. We're gonna plant the plantings.
You monetize the thirteen items.
Okay, just give me the number.
The stormwater does still have to be included. Even if you post a bond for the thirteen items and the planting, the fact that the stormwater has to be confirmed, that's, I told you, that's your most important.
Karina, did you review?
Submit that first.
But, but so we'll make them conform, that's what I said, we'll make them conform.
So give Fussin' O'Neill a chance to review the stormwater, how can you place a bond? And then, but you still have to wait.
I thought you said the storm, the rain gardens in front couldn't be made any bigger.
That, that, that single, the one on the far right, because of the ledge and the high pressure gas line, but you can make space down the other end. It's just, it's just rainwater.
That particular one can't be increased, but they all connect to each other.
Yeah, so you can, you can make one down the, you know, down the way a little bit bigger. And it's, it's, hasn't been a quarter of an inch of water ever in those rain gardens, they've been the heaviest rains. It's only roof water, and, and a little bit of the road water, it's not much.
Yeah, but it's right on the road, it's a nature bus food, I don't feel comfortable with Fussin' O'Neill saying that they don't operate thus.
The grade is substantially lower than the road.
Yeah.
Then it should flush out in this, in this last minute. If you, if Peter's addressed this up, it should flush, it should, you should be all set with this final review.
Like, if the building's occupied or nonoccupied, it has, it's irrelevant to what's going on in front of the building.
But it's what gives power to the code that enforces what happens on the site.
We're not going anywhere.
So. Well, I, I, I'm pulling for you, and I've been trying to help you, but I still feel the calculations need to be confirmed, and you have submitted them, get them to Fussin' O'Neill. You're, you're willing to post a bond, whatever the planning board accepts for that, and if you have confirmation that the stormwater is functioning, great, if it doesn't, you're gonna have to fix it, whether, you just said, but I'm hoping that Peter is, you know, providing the information that shows that those, the way it's built does truly work. So all he has to do is cross the finish line. If you're very confident in what you built there, and you feel it's a problem, it should be very cursory last review.
Yeah, I, I don't feel there's any problem, as I said, I've been there, that.
You're not an engineer, and I appreciate it. But the engineer, the independent engineer has to look at it, that's all, just to confirm it. And we're so close to this, Mike, you gotta get a bond ready. It's a cash bond, so that's easy, you don't have to go get a performance bond.
So, so does number eighteen now, is irrelevant, is that?
Yeah, that's one item. Yeah.
Is that, is it relevant up there?
No, it's not irrelevant, it's pointing out that, don't come asking for, and you're certain, a lot of people get everything done, and then they need to talk code. Oh, we'll get it out. That's to point out, we don't want.
Our top board is in.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, it just doesn't negate one seventy-four ten J that says certificate of occupancy requires that all elements and conditions of site plan be completed and is temporary and be signed off on.
So when can we expect this answer from Fussin' O'Neill?
Soon as we get it, he gave it to me this evening, after five o'clock, so. I'm on vacation, but I can ask Colleen to forward that to them, Melissa should also have a copy, because she's requiring, she's the one paying for it.
She has a book.
I posted all of this. Oh, it was, okay, good, that's already, so, we can ask Melissa to forward it to me. Well, and, you know, ask her, you know, could you please give us an anticipated time? When that comes in, and then you're gonna post your performance or your cash bond, depending if the planning board finds that one acceptable based on what's left, because now we have, they're also able to look at those final last comments, you know, the site comments, the signs and the blood. I don't know how the planning board feels about your freestanding sign, on private, on, on public property, and you're aware of it.
I said we're gonna move it.
I know, I mean, I understand. You know, each little thing makes a big thing, add it all together.
It might not even be on public property, I'm not sure.
Peter should have been able to tell you that.
Yeah.
So I think that's the bottom line, we need, just get the Fussin', we'll get that out to them, we get that answer. This has been, this is a big step, I mean, they.
A big step would have been approval of a bond.
Well, had we had the review, wanting the Fussin' O'Neill to just do that last little review there, but we don't know, we want, hopefully your drainage is sufficient, that's all. So that's my.
So, I'm just, if we get a bond posted, so we get a full occupancy?
No intent.
Why would it be a ten?
Because you still haven't done all the elements and conditions, a ten is made for when you've.
The bond doesn't cover that?
No.
That's what allows you to get the temporary, because it's covering all your undone work, that's all.
The ten, you're allowed to bond the stuff that is remaining, but in order to get a ten, for public health and safety, aspects have to be complete. So if you came in here and you, and you, and your asphalt, and your asphalt drainage worked, right, but you still don't have the plant in, you'd get a temporary certificate of occupancy today by posting on, or when, when the planning puts it. But because you have that drainage component that has to be confirmed, that's your function. And I think I, I, I said, Mike, just get that in, get that, and that's your function, that's your, that's your form, you are. And you've done that now, to see the second, so move on, get that done, hopefully it's good, keep moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide, one. MBTA communities. One of your shop seats, there's only one left. Dorian. I want to know who else is on this.
So, um, I'll, I'll just bring us up today.
Okay.
At the last meeting, do you wanna bring Dorian over?
Yeah.
Um, at the last meeting, we discussed the MBTA communities.
Um, at the last meeting, we discussed the MBTA communities, the guidelines which required us to submit an action plan to the state by January of twenty twenty-three. And Colleen and I worked on that and there was a question of how arduous that would be and what would be required and how we would, how much we would be held to that action plan in the, the day after our last meeting. Hi, Dorian.
Guys.
The day after our last meeting. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I've been watching it, I'm going, holy smokes. I'm totally impressed. I appreciate everything you do. Under fire and everything, I'm, I'm totally impressed.
Thank you. So I attended a webinar, which a lot of questions were asked about this action plan and it's kind of, the state just wants to know that it's on your mind and you're moving forward. And you're not helped when you think in that plan, you can change your mind, you can change your mind. And, um, Colleen, Colleen and I looked at it and it's just, you know, checking boxes and roadmap. Yeah, doing a basic, I mean, you know, we'll do this by this date, we'll do this by now.
Yeah.
So, um, and that will get, keep us in compliance till December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, when we're supposed to have it this year. Oh, and Marty, I don't know if I told you this, I did ask about the, um, my old director of economic development told me that it's not so much, the first couple of words do say shall. And it's not so much that. It is a shall on the MBL, no compliance means not eligible for certain grants, state grants, programs such as NASFOR. More importantly, non-compliance may slash will likely result in suits being filed by developers. This is the biggest concern.
And this is from a prior.
Yeah, my old boss. He's the one, he's in the Jason.
Make a motion, we accept the action plan for MBTA communities, commuter rail community, commuter rail community action plan.
I just asked Dorian, she said a chance to do that.
Andrew, are you tired?
No.
Did you have a chance to look at that, Dorian?
I have not, but I think, my opinion from everything I've seen up to this point, I think we should go forward and at least fill out the January thirty-first and get that paperwork in for the deadline. It doesn't commit us to doing anything, but it shows that we're at least looking at it and we have it. If we're finding our mind, we're taking a hard look at it. So that's what I would recommend, that we go forward with that part of it. And then I think we need to really take a serious look at how this really impacts our town with grants and, and whether we really wanna do this or not. I mean, that's your decision, that's your decision, so, that's not Chopsey's decision, that's a planning board decision. And then we're gonna have to, you know, we'll support whatever you guys decide you wanna do, but I think we should, I think we should at least fill out this January thirty-first and.
Well, me and Colleen filled it out, we sent it in.
Right, I, I just. We can at least have a show of good faith from the town of Southborough and send it in.
No, I don't think we can. All right, and I did, just one more thing, I did request from Vanessa the grants, what we've received in grants, and she was working on that and I haven't played that. So we'll have, we'll have that information moving around. Okay, anybody else? Andrew, would you like to make a motion?
We adopt the action plan for MBTA, MBTA communities for commuter rail systems as completed by fearless chair.
Very good, I have a motion and a second, can we discussion?
Uh, one discussion item, I, I don't think it would be adoption of the action plan. I think it's the submission of the action plan.
Oh, so correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
We're looking, yes, Miriam, yes.
So I wonder, I, I don't know if we just send it in or if we check with Mark and see if we can just send it in. If any, um, input, the select board wants. Although it is so. Yeah, I, I mean, it's a lot of interest in that. Yeah, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, so just, um.
I should know where you guys are.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll send an email, I'll copy Dorian and you. Yeah, and, and let Mark know. Keep us in compliance through December thirty-first.
And could you also send one to me via Chopsey and I'll give it out to my board?
Yes.
And I am gonna make a suggestion, next time we're having a joint meeting, you guys are coming to our meeting, so we don't have to wait. Five minutes. All right, I'm going back to making cookies, am I done?
Thanks for coming.
All right, guys, thanks so much. And again, really super, I'm super impressed by you. I'm, I'm blown away with how much you have to do in a meeting, so thank you for your time and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye.
Next.
Next is the budget.
Very big budget.
So, um, this is due on the twenty-eighth when I get back in the office. I'm hoping that, um, based on what Manny and I talked to you about briefly, how this number came to be, that the planning board will vote to for me to submit this to the treasurer. What will be a starting point? We'll see where it ends up. Typically, we fall pretty close to where we started. You know, we go through this with a fine toothed comb and we don't ask for more than we need and even that we try to do very efficiently. So you'll notice that, um, starting at the top of fiscal year spreadsheet, it's broken up by salaries and then other tests. And salaries, um, the personnel board met and approved a four percent increase for all employees fiscal year twenty-four. I've been working on a step program, which I guess the time I tend to use ago, where you have over fifteen years, two percent. Yeah, we had a study done by the Collins Group and following that model in this step program. So the salaries reflect that four percent. In the remainder of the budget, the only thing that's really increasing is the contracted services, miscellaneous contracted services. And if you look at the large spreadsheet, I tried to pull it about halfway down. You'll see on the right-hand side red writing, those are the changes to the budget. So, um, I just look at the first one, it says fiscal year twenty-four, we reduced six hundred dollars. So master plan was completed and last year we carried six hundred dollars for the additional printing. So this year we don't need that, so we reduce that. You're welcome. Good job, great job. Fiscal year twenty-four, we have added five thousand dollars to assist with MBTA communities compliance and, um, other bylaw amendment support. So we carried fifteen hundred dollars for bylaw support. For example, we hired Justin Hyman to help us with the other elimination group. And, um, you know, this is an estimate based on what could potentially happen, could be possibly more than that. I know that Mark Purple has mentioned to me in the past that some funding we could get for him for bylaw assistance. But this MBTA communities, um, the final phase of this to actually find compliance, we require a pretty big effort. Colleen's currently in contact with a company that's coming in when we get back after Thanksgiving to get some feedback on zoning that, for example. We don't know if they have experience doing layups for MBTA communities yet. Maybe you can have some.
No, he, he's heard, I did ask him about that. He said, no, he's heard of it, but.
Hasn't that worked?
He hasn't actually read the, you know, to the law.
Okay.
And I was a big advocate for increasing that money for MBTA communities. One, because I think it's a huge lift on our own resources and so we need to adequately fund it. I don't even think that's gonna be enough personally, but.
No, it'll be a starting.
It'll be a starting point.
Yeah.
So I, I was a big advocate for that and, and obviously we have the zoning map that we have to take on. So. That's gonna be sort of a joint effort, because we've lost our mapping person at the assessor's office. So he's involved in this and, um, also IT, they, they are involved in it as well and DPW uses it. So we're gonna have a new GIS system. Hopefully the ERC, which seems to be, but we're sort of looking at different people right now.
The Azure.
To help us, Azure, and Azure Azure.
So that's right, so we carried fifteen hundred dollars normally for bylaw assistance, some, a specialist or an attorney or somebody who will help us with that draft bylaws that we don't do in-house on some of these, we need expert experience. So that's why that is sixty-five hundred dollars, an increase of five thousand. And then, um, the zoning map, we carried seventeen hundred dollars this year in hopes to get started with what Colleen is working with, trying to see what we can scope out. You know, they have to update the GIS mapping and then those, you have to create all the changes that happened since two thousand and six. You have to create all that into the map. And so we have to see, this could be, um, covering a consultant outlining what we need to do and maybe doing one of the first steps or a minor step in the process. So, um, the last thing I carried is for fiscal year twenty-four, I added five thousand dollars in there, which, I know these numbers sound kind of round, but I think it's about where it would be for, we have this great aid research database that was completed through two thousand and fifteen. We've tapped into that tremendously, I use it a lot. I'm still in the process of transferring that to the Southborough Loop Drive, but it's almost there. But we have several site plans and a couple subdivisions that have open spaces in them now. So we need to add that, keep that going. It's a great resource and right now we use it internally, but it's held them up. So that's that initiative. And really, those are the only changes and those are pretty minor asks for the initiatives that are very important. We understand we don't wanna drive up the potential. So we're trying to stay lean and mean, but we also need to start taking action on some of this.
So are all these the total of the forty thousand, three sixty?
Yeah, the block, so. Yeah. It's from last year. So what is the difference, what's, what are you changing from last year's budget to this? So for some reason, when you go, the salary bump's four, like what, usually it's been three percent in the past, it always shows two point eight percent. This year we have four percent, so it comes up to three point eight. So these percentages, so last year we had seventeen thousand. It's a, like a weighted percentage, right? So.
Oh, so this isn't, this is just from here.
Yes, it's a weighted, so. Yeah, so from seventeen thousand to twenty-nine seven, it's seventy-four point seven percent increase, right?
Yeah.
But if you weigh it against the entire budget, it only increases the budget then. So typically the treasurer and such would like to see a level funding, which is the salary increase. But we need to start being able to take on some of this. The staff of group, you know, I'm not sure, sorry.
Well, let me just read this right. So this forty thousand, three sixty.
Yes.
It's made up of all these lines up to what?
Up to the salaries, it doesn't include salaries. So the salaries is its own component is across the top and it breaks down.
Or. I hear.
Yes, other charges. Yes. I'm sorry, I see this every year, so it took me, it's like three years to understand it, but now I know.
So the major increase across the board there, or what you highlighted in red about which is the MBTA zoning map.
Correct.
Okay.
And then up here, I showed the increase for the, I didn't actually assess the portion.
Make a motion that we submit the fiscal year two thousand point four budget as presented.
Again, and the motion, the second, we have discussions, all in favor, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Okay, yes, Miriam, yes.
Thank you, and thanks, Marty, for your support and.
Thank you, Marty. I'll get up and defend it too.
All right. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to draft a memo when I get back, addressing the increases, so it's a clear understanding.
Next is St. Mark's Street relocation and Newton Street, stone walls, trees, other way.
So, I just wanna point out that Newton Street was not, um, really part of the discussion, correct, Debbie? That was just left in a prior heading when there were two issues along the sidewalk.
Yes, because St. Mark's was lumped in Newton Street when we were talking about stone walls. And I think I made the error to kind of lump them together psychologically.
And we didn't wanna miss anything, so we carried it.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Debbie had requested this as an agenda, I didn't see me, and also provided some bullet points at the last meeting, Debbie was gonna come up with some items to discuss to hone in on. And she distributed that in a memo for discussions, so.
So, um, well, thanks for the time on the agenda, and I don't wanna take a lot of time on this, but I was trying to pick up on the thread of, um, the planning board's purview of, um, providing feedback to the select board on, um, moving the St. Mark's intersection. And personally, I went back and I, you know, looked at some of the recordings and I, I thought there was a, um, an action for the, um, planning board. And of course, I've missed those conversations, because you had discussions with town council, but it seemed to me that that was sort of in the context of things were moving very quickly, then maybe it wasn't time for planning board to review that. And then, um, at a select board meeting about a week or two ago, um, a couple of the select board members, well, a vote was taken not to move forward with the work on moving the St. Mark's intersection until town meeting. And then, um, it was brought up that, okay, now we have time, proper time for the planning board feedback if they have any concerns in the report, you know, in the, in the, to, to present something in, in a report to the select board. So I would like to suggest that we do that and we take the opportunity. What I tried to do is create a little map of, um, sort of by different areas of, you know, which are applicable sections under the regulations. I think, um, planning board might have a different opinion, but I tried to kind of group them by what I thought might be relevant. I don't know what this report might look like for the, um, select board, so I've never seen one. I'd like to. I don't know what this report might look like for the, um, select board. So I've never seen one. I'd like to, if there's, you know, if there's sort of a report format. But I wanted to just, um, kind of step through a couple of things. Of course, the trees and the stone wall. Karina's already written that fantastic letter and I think that, you know, we have, I'm not sure if you've heard back from select board, but I included it in here. As I was kind of looking through this and trying to put my thoughts down and thinking about, um, the intersection, I've been asking a couple of questions and I have reached out to a couple of groups. So just as background information, um, I, you know, I asked a very basic question of a couple of the select board members specifically about, why are we moving the intersection? Because, um, as you can see from my list, I think it's A through H or something like that. There's a, but there's a number of potential concerns. It might turn out that there are no concerns if, if we have, you know, if we look at these closely. So these are just like, I think, potential on my list, but. So I was told that, um, the reason that we're, you know, the intersection is being moved originally was, um, because of the drainage issue. And turning radius or something of that intersection. So I think it should just be really clear. Um, there is a public records request for any and all correspondence on, from the fire department about the turn radius of the intersection and it produced no records. That's not to say there weren't conversations, but, um, it prompted me to go back in time and, um, I think for those of us who live in town, been in town a while, um, the, the end of the St. Mark's intersection was already, I would say adjusted, I want to say moved, but it was, it was, um, slightly lifted and mo- moved, I guess, a, a little. And I think it was, um, I think that really was for safety issues to be honest, because it now aligns and since for about, probably twelve years. If you look on Google Maps, the intersection looks different. So there's, there's several dates. You can go back in time. Two thousand and seventeen, right now is the latest time period on Google Maps. And it's the current intersection. And then there's a two thousand and eight and then there's a two thousand and two. The two thousand and two is the before and the two thousand and eight is the after. But what you, and I sent some photos to Karina and, um, Colleen. And what it, what happened back then is unfortunately they didn't fix any drainage. It wasn't a big project, my understanding, but it aligned the roadway. So I think it now aligns perfectly with St. Mark's driveway across the street. And, um, and it fixed whatever issues might have been, you know, of concern, um, for the reason and fire. But what that did is when, um, that roadway was moved, the public way still stays in the same location. So the town now licenses that parcel to St. Mark's. And, um, that's where that nice new stone wall is. So I, um, found the license agreement for that. And unfortunately, a stone wall was removed, the historic stone wall was removed in, years later in two thousand and eighteen, under a revocable license agreement. And, um, there's a nice memo from Karen Galligan at DPW saying why she didn't need to come to the planning board. And that stone wall, and I don't think they did, right, for anybody on the board since two thousand and eight. So it was a little historic stone wall and the photo still exists on.
Eighteen.
This one is eighteen. So the roadway was moved slightly, creating a parcel that's the public way. And then, um, in eighteen, St. Mark's put in a request to build that longer stone wall. And that's when the historic stone wall was moved, removed actually. So, um, there's a question, I have heard this from several people, that that stone wall has contributed to drainage, um, flooding issues at the library. I've heard, um, DPW had Karen Galligan say that. I don't know if that's true. I always wondered about it, but juxtapose, yeah, I don't know, right? I'm not sure. But juxtapose that with, um, you know, any, any plant, you know, back that, that area is completely torn up. There's no trees, you know, right in the triangle. St. Mark's Park is looking to put something there. It could be some impervious, you know, material there. And my concern really is how does this impact, um, the area? And I reached out to the, um, library board of trustees to get a, a better understanding about flooding at the library. For example, could moving that, you know, so first of all, flooding at the library, I haven't quite gotten an answer and I have, um, John Parent from Facilities, that's looking for some information for, for me on, you know, what kind of, work was done, but a lot of work was done back in two thousand and nineteen. A year after the, um, nice stone wall went in, but, you know, uh, there's still an issue from what I understand from Ryan, um, Donovan at the library. So my concern, I would say, is trying to understand, um, you know, what has happened at, at the triangle, this current state now. You know, drainage should be fixed and addressed, but how does moving intersection interfere, help or hurt any of the, um, sort of, um, elements that are there and that we have purview over, I guess. And so if I could just read through them really quickly. Um, and you know, I've been a little bit vocal in this area, but I've been keeping this kind of list for a long time. So I think it's now the right time to kind of respectfully, you know, bring this up to the select board. The first is our, um, I kind of grouped these into town, uh, boards, um, you know, purview of stormwater erosion control. So under one seventy-four thirteen five D six, that's the, um, town bylaw. I hope I have these correct. This is my draft, so it could be some errors. But, um, that is, um, what governs, um, planning board review of a project that involves moving an intersection. Um, and under town bylaw one seventy-four thirteen five C, I mentioned this, I think a couple of weeks ago. That's the conservation commission's purview of, um, reviewing a project for stormwater erosion control. If fifty percent of the soil is disrupted, property is not town owned. It's a St. Mark's property, remember? Um, and this, and, um, street has not gone to the planning board and the roadway is not a public way. This is a very little used, um, bylaw because most of what conservation commission does is, you know, not public. So this is, you know, an opportunity for them to get involved. And then the chapter four forty-seven of the nineteen ninety-one legislative act, which formed, um, not just a DPW, but the public works planning board, I think that, um, that this would be an opportunity for the public works planning board to, um, you know, have voice, let's say, any concerns also about St. Mark's Street relocation. And my next little grouping is on trees and stone walls. And that is under master general laws, chapter forty fifteen C. And that relates to the removal of public shade tree along, along a scenic road and also the removal of a stone wall on a scenic road. And that's pending because Karina has written to the select board, um, in September. I hope we hear from them soon. And then, and then I put some information in here and I actually have a copy as well about this limited revocable license agreement. And, um, one, one of the sections, um, of the agreement, point number two says of the licensee, which is St. Mark's, shall not cause any damage to the public way or public road layout or in any way change the existing property in such a manner as to interfere with its function. And I'm not suggesting that it does. But I did hear, um, Ms. Galligan say that the stone wall contributes to the flooding. So I think maybe we should, you know, just ensure that that's, that's not actually happening. The next group is the archaeological dig. Okay, that's not actually under the purview of planning board at all, but I guess I was just making a list of all the, you know, applicable sections. I would say this is applicable under master general law, chapter nine, section twenty-six, twenty-seven. And, um, you know, that this is obviously very pertinent to anything that's going on up there. Um, and just to update everybody, um, there was an archaeological dig. A report has been submitted to Mass Historical Commission, um, in October and, um, there, uh, I guess the town is waiting for, um, a response. So that's, that's that. Okay, one that's a little closer to, um, planning board is, um, parking. This is our zoning code, uh, one seventy-four eight two B twelve, um, use regulations for residential A. I should, I should mention that, um, when the stone wall went in under the license agreement in two thousand, uh, there around two thousand and eighteen, there was a question that was raised by the select board who approved that stone wall. And, um, the question was, where is everybody going to park? Because I guess there had been a problem with a lot of cars parking along St. Mark's Street at that time for the ball fields. And the response from St. Mark's was that they had about a, uh, they had a parking lot up the road that served twenty to thirty spaces. So, um, right now, that parking lot is being advertised as a parking lot. In this document, that's a live link to the St. Mark's campus map. And if you go on there, the St. Mark's Triangle Parking is, is, there's instructions for parents who are, or, you know, people who are visiting St. Mark's and watching one of the games at the playing field. There's a, uh, there's a link on the website that they, they should, they should park in the triangle, which is, in my opinion, is not authorized because they need major site plan approval. Um, and also there's a newly erected sign there and I don't know if anybody had seen that, um, right by the nice long stone wall. And, um, it's the same map as the one online and it's clearly has, um, the St. Mark's parking lot marked for parking. So I think, um, you know, a lot of things, but, um, I think that, uh, that the schools, including St. Mark, uh, Mark's have, have always come to the town as far as I know. And has, have heard, um, that there is, you know, section three of chapter forty A, which is the Dover amendment, but the Dover amendment, um, considers parking reasonable regulation. Under chapter forty A, section three reads that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking and building, building coverage requirements. So e- even though they are a religious institution and could be covered under the Dover amendment, I believe they need to come forward with a plan. So we can first understand what they're trying to do, actually, because I don't believe that we've ever been given a plan. And I believe the right course of action for them is to come forward with a major site plan approval. I also think the building inspector should be notified because I don't think that's an approved use right now. Um, and then finally I just wanted to, um, you know, kind of put down that, you know, I think we all know that the select board have announced a potential land swap for St. Mark's. This is also a legal procedure and it will go to, um, town meeting for a vote this, um, this spring. As part of that, is the creation of an even bigger parking lot than what is what's there. So in two thousand and eighteen, when St. Mark's licensed the, uh, parcel for their stone wall and said that there were twenty to thirty spaces, if you count how many is on this conceptual parking plan, which was first introduced in December twenty twenty, there's, this is a fifty-five spot parking lot. So, um, I'm seeing like a lot of like asphalt and concrete and, you know, movement around. And my, um, concerns, I think, really are, um, you know, what's the effect on this area? It's a sensitive area. It's the jewel of our town. And I don't think that anybody is really planning this area. And then lastly, and I would say almost maybe most importantly is, um, our beloved public library. Now, we all know that the library is, um, you know, without grown space. And just like towns nearby, I personally went to visit, um, uh, Grafton, Marlborough. I understand Shrewsbury also, they've all have, they're all in the same spot. They've got these old historic libraries, beloved by the town. Every single person in town. And yet they've outgrown space. They have figured it out. There's an expansion. I had asked for any kinds of plans on that and I know that they, our library has taken a survey. Um, and sent out a survey. Maybe you guys have, um, you know, responded to it. I, I didn't. I'm sorry to say that I didn't. But, um, and some of, uh, what I think they were trying to capture is whether or not, um, you know, and if you, you know, what would be the nature of a possible future expansion similar to other towns. Westboro is also trying to go through right now. They have a nine million dollar grant, um, from the state that they have to use if they can only get it through their special town meeting. Um, and that's, you know, hasn't happened yet. But so if the library is going to expand, where could it expand? Behind the library. I don't see any other spot, but I'm not an engineer. So there's, you know, more possible future, you know, uh, considerations for the triangle. So, um, I think that all has to really be taken into account. I just want to also say that there, as part of the survey, there was, um, some discussion about the use of this building as an annex or something for a library, but for anybody who's had an annex situation in a town, that is not ideal to bring kids and books and having staff in two different buildings. And so I don't know what the library is planning because I haven't kind of, I had some, uh, emails from a couple of the trustee members, kind of unofficially. But, um, you know, we value our education. We, we value learning and we value our children. This is probably something that the town is going to engage in, in, in time. And so I really think that some of these things need to be kind of considered. While we're thinking about moving a little intersection, it's not clear to me, why are we moving this intersection? If the drainage needs to be fixed, I think we should all agree, we have to fix the drainage. It's ruining our library and that's costly. But it's just totally not clear to me. So, um, I think that some, these are some of the things that I, you know, can contribute to a report that's, you know, cordially written to the select board. Um, and these are the things that I have come up with and I'd just be interested to hear, you know, anybody who agrees or disagrees.
Should follow up with the select. So they need to submit an application for a stone wall to. And we're supposed to get a plan to review the road, but we haven't heard from.
Oh, I like to be more proactive. I mean, the, as far as I know, the plans are posted on the DPW website and I, I think that's all there is, but I don't know. I mean.
So we can just look at what's there, but who can we ask questions to?
That, that's correct. Well, on the engineering, I did reach out to Selectman, um, Skyders and asked him directly, do we have any assurance from, um, the engineers that produce the plan at BHB, for example? Or even our consultant town engineer? We do need a town engineer, but seeing as we have these consultants, you know, do we have any assurance? And he said he's, he's, uh, I, there's no insurance, but I think he said there's nothing in writing, but he's been assured. Okay. So, okay, good. So, but I really, you know, this is the jewel of our town, the jewel with the gem. This is it. And, um, if we do all this work and, you know, I think there's just a lot that's happened. We don't have, you know, we, we learned from, example, from when Christina Bezanson came and she told us about the detrimental effects of taking down trees. You know, there's nothing there, right? So what if there's, you know, the intersection's moved and there's now water rushing into the library? Um, I just think we owe it to the town to act. I just think we owe it to the town to actually put the plan back in this particular area. And said, I don't know whether all of these are applicable, but I would really very much like some assurance from an engineering plan. I don't know how to read the engineering plans, but I tried, you know, looked at on the website. But I do want to speak to somebody about, you know, we're paying somebody a lot of money for this. We should be assured that this isn't going to make the situation worse, that it's actually going to help it. But of course, in light of this potential, potential changes, with either a possible expansion, the parking lot, St. Mark's, Pocket Park, these are all things I'm not sure that they've been considered altogether, and the stone wall that's there. Who's looking after this stuff? So I think it's up to us.
Mr. Jones.
Oh, first of all, thank you. Appreciate it. The other driver would say that we're going to invest in the libraries. And historic preservation.
Okay. Does that mean an annex can't be used? I mean, this is also a beautiful building. I would not want to see this as an annex.
That, that building is always supposed to be. I think it's on the D already, but it's a library, but CPC technical. Um, so I think it just goes to support the fact that that building's going to continue to be there. You know, I, I agree too, to follow up with our. I think you bring up a lot of great points there. Just have to be careful and make sure you stick to what our jurisdictions. Like, rebuild everything in there. It has to get to this point. We just got to keep it to, like, okay.
Yeah, I mean, in, in terms of the intersection, if you look at the roadway, that's kind of like a phantom road that's there. The grading is, I don't know how that, I'm not an engineer, Karina, maybe you can help. But, I mean, you know, there's, it's not flat. I mean, who is, you know, I'm sure that's part of the BHP plan that, you know, it's all going to be fine. But, yeah, that's my main concern. I'm sure there's other concerns, but to protect our public asset, I mean, Southborough should be protected in this. It should not make our assets worse. And I don't, you know, I, I personally don't have that assurance. And actually, Mr. Skyder says he doesn't either. He's been assured, but not in writing. So let's get something in writing, or let's talk to the right people. Let's all look at the plans.
So, Mr. Trump, I am, I just would say, thank you very much for putting this together. I agree, like, I do think we should be proactive, because I think that we've all witnessed when the boards don't talk to each other, and there's this cross-communication and pointing fingers. I'd got to be proactive. I completely appreciate it, like, let's talk about the stone walls, the parking, like, the, and maybe we kind of take a lot of the components that you've had, like, you've done a lot of the research, so thank you for that. But then I would say, like, you as an individual citizen should also put something in writing, and then also share, like, to the Conservation Commission and the Historic Commission. I, I do think, like, more information that's known, like, a lot of this research that you've done. I mean, to your point, like, you don't know if it's completely covered in certain things, but if we're not proactive and say, like, we are a board of the people, and the people have said at town meeting, this is not okay. And so I do feel compelled that we should be proactive, not only asking about the letter, but saying, oh, and by the way, there are some other things that we would like to raise.
Mr. Stein.
Well, yeah, Debbie, thanks for your comprehensive work on this. And I certainly support submitting a report that's within our jurisdiction.
A report on the road, or a report on all these issues that Debbie raised.
Well, some of the issues that Debbie raised were not within the Planning Board's jurisdiction. I really, it's getting very late, and I don't feel like picking it apart right now, to be honest with you, Mimi. But, you know, it's, it's, to me, things that are related to zoning and, you know, that's, that's what we're really about as a board. And some of the items were more Select Board things.
Yeah, Jesse, thank you for that. I, I, you know, have not seen a report. I mean, I listened to former Chair Mr. Morris say that, you know, there's an opportunity to express concerns. And I read, actually, and we, I think Town Council read to you guys before I joined this section, General Law, Section 4181I, about, I guess this is what, this is the Master General Law equivalent, I guess, about Planning Board being able to express, I don't know, I don't see anything that says concerns, or even that it needs to be expressly on zoning. So I wasn't sure exactly what, what can, you know, what's acceptable, for example, to go into a, a report.
Right. And all I'm saying is, I, I would prefer if we kept to within, you know, the normal Planning Board items. We do not have site plan review, in my opinion, jurisdiction over this. We have, as Mr. Talerman said back in February, the, the, our jurisdiction is pretty much limited to submission of, in effect, a letter, a comment letter. So I mean, you're, you're in a unique position, Debbie, because you're also on the DPW Planning Board. And some of the stuff that you, you know, for example, the drainage and the impact to the library, that is an example of something that, to me, is not a Planning Board matter, but could be a DPW Planning Board matter. So I think we personally just feel like we've taken up a lot of time on this, and I'd like to move on. Thanks.
Thanks, Jesse. So this is that the relocation is referred to the Planning Board, as opposed to us just looking at amendments.
So it's been mentioned a couple of times. So in that last.
But it's never been referred.
Not, not formally. That's right. Now, Mr. Dennington brought it up for meeting a couple. They've had a lot of meetings, so maybe about a week and a half, two weeks ago, but that's correct.
So the letter, the referral of the, the report in the stone wall and trees, the jurisdiction. I, I think St. Mark's is required to have a site plan, but that doesn't go to the Select Board. But maybe, I don't know.
But if you're putting a list of concern, I mean, it's not really a list of concerns for the Select Board to deal with, though, right? It's just your report of concerns.
Well, so we're looking for the Select Board to file the application for the stone wall entry removal and to refer the road plan to the Planning Board. That's what mine.
Yes, yeah.
Can, I just said to Debbie, I would help refine this into, like, our jurisdiction, and then submit it maybe for you to review or to bring up for discussion for December 12, because we're still waiting.
Yep.
And then we, maybe you can look at it before our meeting and then bring it to that meeting. Can we maybe move it up in the discussion, so it's not at the time? That would be my preference, but maybe have some of our ideas for other people.
All right.
That's not.
Thank you.
The tree protection by law. So I'll just say that I sent an updated bylaw, which I remove the reference to the drip line. I added the amendments that we were going to amend on town.